Good evening. We actually had a quorum at seven o'clock and it's now ten past, so I'd like to ask everyone to please take your seats and we'll try to get underway. Good evening, and welcome to the 2023 Annual Town Meeting. We're going to get going, so could I ask everyone to please wind up your conversations? Thank you. My name is Dan Evans. I'm your town moderator, and welcome to our 2023 Annual Town Meeting. The tellers have informed me that a quorum is present, so the meeting will please come to order. The return of the warrant by the town constable shows that the warrant was properly served, so the meeting is properly constituted. We begin every one of our town meetings with a pledge of allegiance, so may I ask that you please stand and join me in pledging allegiance to our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. It's a tradition that we begin our annual town meeting by reading the names of townspeople who have served the town either in a volunteer or paid capacity and who died during the preceding year, and then observing a moment of silence for them. So I'll read the names, and then I would like to ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Josephine Mauricio, Ronald Emmons, Carolyn Gray, Carol Sissot, Donald Robbins, Joan St. John, Frederick Nudorf, Richard Conley, Anthony Sestito, Samuel Wakeman, Holly Madden-Merrell, Chip Munsey, Ruth Clark, A.J. Anton, Colonel Edward Graham, and Carolyn Queenen. Please join me in a moment of silence for all of our fellow citizens. Thank you. I'll start by introducing the participants in the meeting that are up here at the front of the room as your town representatives or volunteers. To my left, to your right, is our Board of Selectmen, Jack Creighton, the Chair, Jean Healy-DiPole, the Vice Chair, Corey Evans, Paul Grady, and Diane Kennedy. Also at that table is our Town Manager, Chris Senior, Town Council, Carolyn Murray. Behind me, to your left, directly behind me, is our Advisory Board, Rob Hillman, Chair, Mary McGoldrick, Vice Chair, Jean Estino, Mike Barclay, Fran Collins, Patrick Kennedy, Mark Maggie, Ellen Maher, and Meg Wheeler. Eventually, at this table will be our Town Clerk, Elizabeth Legere, and Assistant Town Clerk, Elizabeth Anderson. And then, in a small table behind the Advisory Board, are our tellers, who will conduct any hand counts if those are necessary, Phil Faulkner, Susan Hobson, Jane King, Rolf Yes to Be, and Debbie Leggett. Our guest policy is that anyone who is not a registered voter in the town is given a name tag when they come in, so that we can identify them as not registered. If they're not a town employee or assisting a town body, they'll be sitting up here in the non-voting section. Town employees or professionals who are assisting town bodies may be seated here in the general gallery, but they won't be voting. I want to draw your distinction, as we always do, between the articles and the motions that we make and consider underneath the articles. You should have ideally two written documents in your hand. One is the sidebound printed document that arrived in the mail titled "Town of Cohasset Warrant," and the other is the stapled copied document titled "Town of Cohasset Town Manager's Proposed Motions." The articles in the warrant provide notice of the matters that are going to be acted upon this evening. The language that we are actually considering and voting on is the language that is contained in the motions. And to avoid reading the motions, which would take a long time, on each article I will ask for a motion in the form distributed to the meeting, and then hopefully someone will so move it. What that's doing is making the motion using the words that were included in the town manager's motion. Obviously, people can later propose changes to those, but the words that are in the town manager's proposed motions are the words that are being used when somebody moves the motion in the form distributed to the meeting. On each article, we will vote by voice vote unless I'm uncertain on the count, or at least seven voters stand and indicate by standing that they doubt my count. If it's necessary to vote by hand ballot, the tellers will take their stations along the side. We have five tellers. They'll divide the chairs, two people per group of chairs, and one person covering the stands over there, and we'll conduct a hand count, first of the yeses, then of the noes. In order to vote by hand ballot, you'll need to hold this little purple strip of paper that you received when you came in. You'll need to hold that in the air, so you should be sure that you can locate that purple strip that you were given when you came in. That's what it's for. If you would like to speak on a motion, please move to a microphone to be recognized. The microphones here, there's one in the front of the room, there's one in the middle in the aisle, another on both side aisles here. So I think we have a total of six microphones available for all of you. Move to a microphone. I'll try to recognize you in order to let you know I've seen you, and then when it's your turn to speak, please begin by giving your name and address. Please keep the debate concise and to the point. All of our debates should be courteous and respectful. I would call your attention to the fact that brevity is both courteous and effective. Sarcasm is never appropriate. Generally, it should not be necessary to refer to individuals involved in the debate. We don't want people commenting on another individual. We want people commenting on the points and on the ideas. If you must refer to another speaker's remarks just by way of identification, please do so with the utmost respect. Speakers are limited to five minutes unless somebody's arranged that with me in advance. If at any point you have a question about the procedure or the conduct of the meeting, including a concern that I may have done something incorrectly, you should seek to be recognized. Let me know that you have a point of order, and then state your question or concern. One of the motions that one often sees is a motion to move the question or a motion for the previous question. This is a motion for stopping debate. It brings an immediate vote on the question of whether to stop the debate. If the debate stops, then the debate is stopped, and then we go on and have a vote on the main motion. Motion to move the question requires a two-thirds vote for adoption. It may not be debated, so if you intend to make a motion to move the question, you should not include any other remarks with your motion. I will only recognize it after both sides have had a fair opportunity to be heard, and if I've already recognized some voters as being in line to speak, I may recognize, depending on where we are in the debate, I may give them a chance to speak before we move to moving the question. Finally, a comment just on our timing. We have a lot to do this evening. Would love to be able to tell you, I thought we'd be home in time to watch the end of the Celtics game. I think that's probably a little aggressive. I do think we should be able to get through everything this evening. I'm thinking that we will probably take a five-minute break to stand and stretch our legs somewhere in the mid-teens of the articles. I think at that point we'll have made enough progress that we feel like we've sort of broken the back of most of the night, that we deserve a five-minute break, but not so deep into the evening that we risk losing people when we take our five-minute break. Are there any questions about the procedure or conduct of the meeting? Very well, we'll proceed to Article One, where we recognize citizens and employees for particular service to the town. For the Select Board, I'd like to recognize Diane Kennedy.
Good evening, everybody. It's my great pleasure to move that the recognition of the named citizens and employees be accepted and placed in the permanent records of the town. In recognition of service to the town as a board and committee member, Maria Plant, Cohasset Town Constable, and Dr. Robin M. Lawrence, Board of Public Health, two longtime servants. In recognition of service as an employee of the town upon retirement, Diana Barberi, teacher, 28 years of service, Suzie Corkum, teacher, 25 years of service, Deborah Henry, teacher, 28 years of service, Denise Leone, ESP, 10 years of service, Boyd Livingston, DPW, 35 years of service, Frances X. Mahoney, Fire Department, 34 years of service, Lori Walsh, Library, 23 years of service, and finally Garrett Hunt, police officer, 26 years of service.
For the record, all those in favor of the motion to recognize all those individuals, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The motion was passed. I'll recognize for the veteran services, Phil Mahoney.
Thank you. The final Cohasset citizen to be recognized has significance that extends beyond our town boundaries to the national level. Since the town's founding in 1770, 38 Cohasset residents had given their lives in the service of their country. In February of 2023, a 39th fallen hero was added to that honor roll, Michael T. Ernst. A decorated U.S. Navy SEAL, Chief Ernst served with distinction, and as a grateful town, we remember his example in honorous sacrifice. Thank you.
For the record, may I have a motion in favor of the recognition? Thank you. Second? Thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. The motion passed, and the record will reflect that there was a standing ovation. Article Two, may I have a motion that the reports of the various town officers as printed in the annual town report for 2022 be accepted and placed in the permanent records of the town? Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you. Does require a majority vote for adoption? Is there any discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Motion under Article Two, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Three, Reports of Committees. For the OPEB Committee, I will recognize the Chair, Mr. Tim Davis.
Thank you, and good evening. I am pleased to report that the OPEB unfunded liability dropped during the current reporting period from $56.5 million to $29.1 million. This is a 48% drop in liability. The OPEB Trust Fund, in spite of the difficult investment environment, remained constant at $5.5 million, thereby increasing the funding ratio from 8.9% to 15.9%. Much of this was due to the applicable discount rate rising from 2.44% to 6.75%. The discount rate, also the actuarial present value of the OPEB Trust Fund, is based on our actuaries' assessment that the OPEB funding plan, supported by the Select Board and the community for the past 10 years, is sufficient to meet our obligation to our town employees. I quote from the KMS actuaries' report, quote, "As of the June 30th, 2022 measurement date, the OPEB Plan's fiduciary net position was projected to be available to make all projected future benefit payments of current plan members," close quote. This is significant for the town well beyond OPEB. With the existing plan in place and the positive report from our actuaries, the bond rating agencies look favorably on Cohasset's ability to service its liabilities, and therefore give the town a triple-A rating. This, of course, reduces the cost to our taxpayers for interest paid on future debt. I would like to thank the Select Board and the community for their continuing support of the OPEB funding plan. Thank you.
And for the School Committee, I recognize the Chair, Lance Style.
And I will have the School Committee join me, since this is a report from the committee as a whole. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of Select Board, and fellow citizens of Cohasset. It's 2021, and I've just joined the School Committee. The Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan, takes me on a tour. We visit several classes of many grade levels, and we get to a fourth grade class. They're discussing a project, some literary current event, and it's a discussion-based atmosphere. One student raises a hand and makes a point. Another student raises a hand and politely disagrees. A third student raises her hand and mentions, "Going back to the original point, I agree in part and I disagree in part." I am floored. I remarked to Dr. Sullivan that this discussion is better and more structured than what I see in meetings at my workplace, which was ostensibly populated with grownups, with college and graduate degrees. And Dr. Sullivan's response changed the way I looked at Cohasset schools and their potential. Lance, our schools are fantastic because we have the highest quality students you'll find anywhere, and that's because we have great parents, we have great teachers, and we have great staff. There is no reason why Cohasset schools cannot be the best schools in the South Shore. And then he paused and corrected himself. The best schools in the state. Now, there's a mission. That's what our town and that's what our children deserve, and that's what this School Committee and this administration is seeking to provide. And we're getting there. Coming off of a generational challenge in the form of COVID, the administration has made great efforts to identify learning loss and taken steps to identify those learning gaps. It's still a work, but we're moving forward. We've implemented new curricula in mathematics and in English Language Arts, ELA for those in the know, and we've recently hired a Director of Data Curriculum and Evaluation to help bring a data-driven orientation to future curriculum development. Responding to some standardized test scores that reflected a quality education but not up to our standards, the administration has embarked on revisions to instruction to ensure that students know how to take these tests and are equipped to meet all of the challenges they may face when taking them. We've implemented new technology, so parents who use the school buses can know where school buses are in real time. We've significantly enhanced our food service options, improving menu quality and design, hiring an Assistant Director of Food Service culinary specialist. With the assistance and support of the town, we've replaced aging fields and tracks at our high school that pose risks of injury to our student athletes. And finally, again, working with the town, we delineated more clearly the responsibilities of building and ground maintenance, with our custodians assuming responsibility for landscaping. And there are many more. In fact, in advance of this meeting, I asked Dr. Sullivan to prepare a few bullet points that I could share with you about our accomplishments, because I think it's important that we see what's going on with the schools. And he did. He produced this 16-page list of accomplishments that I will proceed to read.
He's just joking.
Oh, yeah, you're right, joking. I'll skip ahead, okay? Kidding aside, this will be posted on the school's website, and I encourage you all to take a look, because this stuff is working. Our internal test scores are showing dramatic and outsized improvements. Missed buses are down by 12%. The Yelp reviews on school lunches have increased by a full star, and the average number of leaves on the ground per square foot of outdoor space this fall was reduced by two-thirds. Mr. Kearney?
Just a time check, you have four minutes.
Okay. Our schools will always be a work in progress, and we still have some headwinds. Primary among those headwinds are not our teachers or staff, our parents or our students, but our facilities. In short, they're aging. You need to look no further than our permanent temporary tarp to see that these facilities need some help. And the facilities' challenge that we face is not just function, it's academics. Our schools and this building in particular lack the physical resources to appropriately implement the modern team discussion-oriented methods of teaching. It's been a paradigm shift out there, and our facilities are limiting our ability to adopt it. We also have roofs that are reaching to their end of life. Our climate control systems are out of date, and we don't even have a permanent place to park our buses. Addressing these challenges will not be cheap, and we live in a world of limited resources. This will be expensive, and as I'm sure we all know, renovation of public buildings is, in a word, taxing. But I'm confident that working together, we will be able to address all of these facilities issues going forward with your help. And if I may, just for a moment, I'd like to publicly recognize our School Committee members, Craig McCollin, Ted Carr, Paul Kearney, and most importantly, and on behalf of the whole School Committee, Lydia St. Anges. Thank you very much for your service. You will be attending our last School Committee meeting this Wednesday. So thank you for your service, and thank you, everyone, for all your time. How'd I do?
Are there any other town committees that have prepared reports? Very well, there's no need for us to vote on the reports, so we'll move to Article Four, which is the Operating Budget. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. I'm going to do a quick presentation on the Operating Budget, which you will find in the packet. There's an amendment, there was a small amendment to Appendix A, which you'll find in the motion packet tonight. So as we built the budget, the Select Board gave direction. We start with these kind of points. As you heard earlier, we have a triple-A credit rating. We received about eight years ago, and we've maintained that all through. We have strong fiscal policies that are reviewed and checked and added to periodically. We have stable fund balances, which are very important, not just for the rating agencies, but for operations. In case anything happens, we're there, we can keep things going. Conservative budgeting is a ground base for everything here. We start off very simply. It's not add, 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 it's what do we really need, how do we make it work? And our financial statements just won their 10th straight award for transparency and completeness. So if you really want to read them, if you want to go to sleep early, you can read the CAFRA, it's online. It's a very long document, but it includes all of our finances, and it's a great read if you're a financial analyst. So as we begin looking both at this year and next, one of the things that's important that's not in the budget but is important to highlight is how we've been able to use some of our federal ARPA money. I'm sure everyone's heard about all of this. One of them that the Select Board approved just the other day is new school math and arts curriculum, which is again a continuing partnership. That's about $270,000 that we've applied for money that's city, Norfolk County, that's the towns. We've done a big expanded communications program. For any of you who've seen our much more expanded social media presence, there's a lot more information flowing out, and more information will be flowing in with the next piece, which is our new, what we'll be talking about in a second, our new CRM. We've also been plugging gaps with the ARPA money. As you heard earlier about Alumni Field, the Turf and Track, there was a hole in the bid. We plugged, the Select Board plugged that. They just did that with the Beachwood Water Main replacement, there was additional funds that were needed, they were able to use ARPA money for that. And also for the library roof project, which is coming up, but again, we had a gap in the bid and the amount of money we had. So that money from ARPA is going to all these projects. Also, in the last year, we've been awarded more than $1 million in grants that cover a whole host of things, from public safety, public works, Safe Harbor Cohasset, which is the group that does smart choices and anti-drug addiction for kids and for families. That one, the biggest, that won a new five-year grant for $650,000 from the federal government. So I really want to applaud all the work that those folks do, Nicole Blash, and all the volunteers who make that program go, and all the youth ambassadors. It's one of the most popular organizations in high school and middle school, and it's been a great, great addition to Cohasset. The priorities is going to '24, of course, maintaining high-quality services. There's an ongoing need to recruit, train, and support professional staff. We had a very large turnover in our financial staff this year, which was not anticipated but happens, a draw from a variety of reasons, some retirements, some higher salaries in the private sector with young families, and also some folks who want to just kind of scale back their commutes. That said, we have a great team, and that continues to be a top priority. We're also introducing, as I mentioned just a minute ago, this Cohasset Connects. Just launched, it's a customer relations management program, which means you can download the app, you can go onto the website, you can make a phone call. But the app is easy, and you can report a pothole or ask a question. So it's out there now, it's called Cohasset Connects. Go on Apple or Google Play, and you'll be able to download that app. We're going to continue to roll it out for departments, starting with Public Works, and our community services, which is library and recreation, veteran services. We're going to roll it out to the entire town, and it'll be a great way for people to easily access, to be able to track your request, and for us to track them too, because reporting needs to get a little more modern for us as well, so we know what's out there and what we're doing. Another key the Select Board's been working on intensely with all the staff is planning for capital investments, major investments in our buildings, our schools, our fields, harbor, roads and sidewalks, water and sewer. There's a lot of generational work that unfortunately needs to come. And that said, it'll be something that you've heard about, and you'll be hearing about it in the year and years to come, and you'll hear it, there's six articles tonight, but another big piece of the next year is to continue to support the next phase of this own bylaw study. The first phases will be tonight. So the budget, where does it come from? Well, as I'm sure there's no surprise, 84% is funded by property tax, and most of that is residential. We have a 93% residential tax base. And then we have pieces that come from local receipts, the little green and red, state aid, and then other available funds from a variety of things. So our local revenue is mostly motor vehicle excise tax, and state aid is mostly aid for the schools. Total $54 million. Where does it go? Directly, 51%, or more than half of it, goes immediately to the schools. The next biggest slice, they say the biggest, next big wedge there is for benefits and insurance. That's our pension, our health care, and all of that for employees. And you can see there's a declining amount for a lot of other things, including general government, which is only 9% of your tax bill. So that is where all the money goes. The focus, though, was always on Cohasset. Behind me, a few pictures from this past year. That's the zoning, one of the zoning bylaw working group meetings, there was a series of them in the fall, and then the spring. I see Clark Brew right in front of me, it was in all of them, and Tom Callahan over there, so it was a big, very well-attended series of events. You'll see up to the right there, there's a new speed warning signs. We just put a new one on King Street. Those are kind of keen to pop up around town as a warning to remind people to go slow with kids, families, keep the speeds down. Just opening today, the new boat ramp at Parker Ave, that was funded in large part with the $800,000 grant from the Seaport Economic Council. We'll have an official ribbon cutting for that, but that officially opened today. So you get your boats in the water back at Parker Ave, and hopefully that will last for many decades to come. So that is a quick synopsis of the budget. Mr. Moderator?
Thank you. For the Select Board, I'll recognize Jack Creighton.
The Select Board unanimously voted to approve the budget. Thank you.
Thank you. For the Advisory Committee, I'll recognize the Chair, Rob Hillman.
Good evening. The Advisory Committee is charged with reviewing all warrant articles that come to town meeting, and really first among these is the budget. In order to do this annually, the Advisory Committee meets with heads of town departments, with the town manager, with the finance director, commissions and committees, anything that has a line in the budget. Our job is to look at it, to ask what are hopefully intelligent questions, make suggestions, and prepare a recommendation for town meeting, and also... and prepare a recommendation for town meeting, and also to prepare the boards for town meeting. All of these questions and meetings occur in, in open meetings, which are online. They're available to you on the town website. And if you've run out of things on Netflix, it's wholesome family entertainment. But really, we're very pleased, as we have been for the last few years, that the goal of the town budget is to provide level services for an amount of money within the available revenues to the town. Because the town is basically a service providing entity. And the overwhelming majority of what we spend each year in our budget is labor cost. And the great majority of that is labor cost to our town employees who are employed in unions and through collective bargaining agreements. And the advisory committee is pleased that the town manager for the town unions has settled contracts with every union and the school committee has a settled contract with the unions that, in the contracts that it administers. This provides for predictability in, in budgeting and is really important. So the people who are running our town are doing an excellent job at what it is that our town primarily does. So with those considerations in mind, the advisory committee voted unanimously to support and recommend a town meeting, that town meeting approved this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. The school committee has by a vote of four to zero recommended approval of the portion of the budget that relates to the schools. Is there any discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote under the motion under Article Four. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously.
Thank you.
We'll proceed to Article Five, borrowing article for town hall. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption. I meant to mention this at the top of the meeting, but I'll mention it here. I know there's a lot of careful thought has gone into this article. There's a lot of points of view on this article. There's also been a lot of public discussion on this article. So in the interest of consideration of our fellow townspeople in brevity, I would ask all of the folks who would like to speak on this article to particularly try to keep their remarks brief and limit them to points that have not already been made. For the town hall building committee, I understand we're going to have, rather than remarks by an individual, we're going to have a, a video presentation. Sorry, I'll recognize our chair of the town building committee, Phil Lehrer.
Thank you. We have a short video to show. It encapsulates a lot of the details that went into this. Most of it comes from our public forum last Thursday night. After that, I will introduce our committee, Town Hall Building Committee, and then open it up for discussion. I'm sorry.
Yes, we'll, we'll recognize, we'll have folks speak on behalf of the other boards and then we'll have the discussion.
Hello, my name is Phil Lehrer and I'm chair of the Town Hall Building Committee. Our committee has been working on this project since it was formed by the select board in 2019. And we're appreciative of the opportunity today to show you the results of our hard work. The Town Hall Building Committee supports and recommends moving forward with this project. We hosted a public forum last week to present and discuss the project. And if you weren't able to attend, here's a short recap.
I'm Jack Creighton, I'm privileged to be chairman of the Town of Cohasset Select Board. We're here tonight to hear from the committee appointed by the select board to examine what to do with our town hall. I want everybody to know the work that they have done, the unbelievable hours. They're all skilled in their fields. So the facts and figures that will be presented tonight have embedded, they've done a very, very good job.
I currently copy. This is my second time around on the Town Hall Building Committee of the four that we have had studying this problem since 2007. There was one that looked just at Old Town Hall in 2007. In 2014, another committee was commissioned and they looked at both buildings, determined that actually the annex was in worse shape. Another building committee was put together in 2016. They brought a plan to town meeting in 2018. That plan passed with about 75% of the vote, then did not pass at the ballot. As a result, the town hired a number of engineers to come in and do an in-depth study of the building as-is, so that we could see exactly what would be involved in a full-scale renovation, so we could compare that to a new plan.
We looked at every available parcel of land that the town owned and analyzed it for the possibility of putting a brand-new town hall building on it. We debated, discussed, and finally determined that the best option was to do a renovation of this building and a rebuild of the annex. So when the select board reconstituted another building committee in 2019, that was the charge, was to do the, the restore and rebuild.
Since that time, we have presented to town meeting three times. Once for the project design and engineering, once for funding future construction, and then in 2022 for the appropriation to hire the construction manager.
Some of the critical needs of the town, of the building that were identified, not least of which was the fact that our town government has outgrown the space, there's not enough office space, there's not enough meeting space. All of the systems in the building, the HVAC, the electrical and the plumbing, need to be upgraded over there and replaced over here. We still have knob and tube wiring in this building. There's no fire suppression system in this building. This building is not fully accessible. There's rot and water damage. So for decades now, water has been leaking in. The building needs a new roof. There's a chimney on the side of the building, which is separated from the building and has a crack in it. There's asbestos that needs to be, do I need to go on? There's a lot of problems in the building. Got started, we, we looked again at what the programmatic needs of the town were, whose offices were in this building, whose offices should be in this building, how much space they needed, which offices were most visited by the public and therefore should be most accessible, and evaluated all of those things and made sure that we were going to meet the needs of the town and provide what the select board asked for, which was a safe, flexible, functional, and accessible building that could last for decades to come.
I'm Tucker, I'm a lifetime resident and I'm really happy and proud to be on this committee. And I want to talk to you about what we came up with, right, based on the charges that Carolyn just laid out to you. So I'm first going to talk to you about the exterior. This is our building that we're proposing right here. We spent a lot of time designing it. We spent a lot of time working with our architect, making sure that it looked right. And what we meant by that is we wanted it to look fitting on the common, right? We have an invaluable resource here in our common that we use all the time, we love, it's probably one of the community's greatest assets. And we thought, if we're going to redo the building, it should at least be fit. It should be complementary, but subservient to existing historical structures. And here it is from a, just from the siding, what are the main entrance of the building would look like if you were standing in the park. Wanted to make it accessible as well, making sure that we had enough handicap parking spots, that they were in the right places, right? That the building, if it's going to be a public building, is accessible to kind of all the members of the public. We're going to add, I think it's six single-stall bathrooms that will be available, yes, at events here, but we can make available in, when the town hall is closed for the farmer's market, it can be open for the strawberry festival slash the arts festival, right? So there'll now be public restrooms available to anything we want to put on the common. The other thing we're going to do is we're going to put a caterer's kitchen in here. People, members of the public come in asking if they can rent this space. It will be much easier to rent now. It will have a lot more facilities because it will have bathrooms and it will have a caterer's kitchen, completely independent of the town government. See this nice direct access that will go straight through the building, making all of the public departments available, right? Making it easy to find. So you'll have down here the town clerk, the treasurer collector, the building department, all kind of, so you need to pull a permit, whatever, come in to talk about, whatever you need to with those departments. You don't have to go upstairs, you don't have to go down hallways, you don't have to have a half stairwell in the middle, right? It's all right there. So as we return to having meetings in person like we are tonight, we will need to have some meeting spaces for them to meet in. This will be one of our meeting spaces. Nice centrally located elevator and stairwellment, right? Together, very easy to use, easy to find when you come in. There'll be a lot of the non-public facing people, IT, HR, counting, things like that. Be on the second floor here, so we are going to be continuing to use the offices up here. We'll have two meeting rooms upstairs, right? So we'll have a small one, we'll have a medium-sized one, and then kind of over at Willcut, we have our large. What happened did about this building, and I know this is a major concern, is we want this building to, to be around for a while, right? We don't want to build this and then rebuild it 20 years. So one of the major accomplishments we have here is we made it so that none of the rooms are really fixed, right? If 25 years from now, we say, we need a really different layout for the town government, we've made it so there are not many fixed structures besides the vault. We will now have it so that if the needs of the town change, we can change the building, right, as it exists, by just moving some of the walls around. That will give this building really good longevity. Now you've seen what we get, we can talk about what it's going to cost. The construction costs are about $21.6 million. There's a contingency of about a million dollars for the construction and then soft costs, $900,000. Owners project manager, $800,000. Design fees of approximately a million, and then soft cost contingencies of about $400,000. This is a guaranteed maximum price, so when I say that's what it's going to cost, that's the most that it would cost. There also are opportunities for additional savings based off of bids that have been received to date. There are opportunities for us to rebid some of those items. There are contingencies that are built in, so to the extent that the contingencies are not eaten into, that money comes back to the town. So there are possibilities for savings off of that, but as of today, that is the number that we view as the guaranteed maximum price, so a not-to-exceed number for this project. Question then becomes, how do we pay for it? Initial construction for this project would be financed with a short-term debt. And at that point, we would convert it to a long-term bond after the construction is complete. That would likely happen in fiscal year 2026, with the first payment in 2027. Now the payments would decline every year as, as we're paying off the, the service on, on our loan. This is a, a chart that's been prepared, that is an estimate of, of what that actually means based off of the median home value in town. $432 per year, based off of median valuation, $993,000. This year, the less the debt service will offer to the OSGA, so right now, on the average home, it's $220 per year is going to fund the OSGA debt. That rolls off, leaving a net increase of $232 once those two things have been done. This is debt that would roll off after we paid off the debt of a 30-year bond. And that would be voted on the town election on May 13. It is the recommendation of this committee to proceed with the project. We think it meets the needs of the town. This project is shovel-ready. We spent many years looking at this project and, and we keep coming back to the same place. The price is not going to get better. This is an opportunity to invest in the future of this town.
Once again, we appreciate you giving us the time to present this. The next decision is up to the town. We strongly believe this is the best path forward and we recommend that you vote to approve the article and this project. And we are available to answer your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. For the select board, I'll recognize the chair, Mr. Jack Creighton.
Thank you all for coming. This is an extraordinarily difficult decision and this decision can only be made by you. The select board split, two for, two against, and one abstention. This reflects the difficulty. Ultimately, this decision has to be made by the citizens. We and the select board, despite disagreements, have ensured over the past year and before that, that information has been made available. There are things on the website, they're still available. All of the meetings, and there have been many, were on Zoom, publicized on 143. They were extensive. This committee has worked tirelessly, they're skilled professionals, they hired very well-vetted professionals to advise them. But when we really come down to it, this is, it is a wonderful building, everybody agrees. It is also a wonderfully expensive building. This is your decision and that's, that's what it is. And again, the select board split, two for, two against, and one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you. For the advisory committee, I'll recognize Mike Barclay.
Good evening. Mike Barclay speaking on behalf of the advisory committee. The advisory committee voted unanimously to support this project. And I'd like to share with you a couple of the reasons why we believe the time is now to move forward with this. I also serve as liaison to the Capitol Committee and when I put on a master planning and Capitol hat, there's no sugar coating that we have a really long list of projects that need to be addressed in this town. And Town Hall is on that list. And in my opinion, we, we got to start to move forward with some kind of framework that allows us to attack this list and start to take care of this. We referenced our AAA rating just a while ago. You know, there's a responsibility that comes with the AAA rating. The rating agencies, the investors who invest in our town, they expect us to invest in our infrastructure. And frankly, a vote for this project is not a vote against any other project. We fully recognize public safety, the schools, the roads. There are a lot of needs in this town and we have to start to address it. There's a lot of questions around the cost. The cost is high and it's surprisingly high, but unfortunately, the reality is whether you're in the commercial real world, the residential world, the cost of construction is high. Labor, materials, interest rates, and, and frankly, the clunkiness of the municipal process makes it even harder for municipal buildings to be approved, passed, financed, and constructed. Hoping that labor, material, rates are going to go down isn't really a strategy. Kicking the can down the road isn't a strategy. This is a project that's been brought to you by a group of very qualified citizens who have spent three and a half years turning over every rock possible to evaluate what the best option is. Moreover, they've done this during a 100-year pandemic and there really isn't anywhere that you can go that, you know, in the last two years, we know inflation is there. And while this cost is higher than expected, again, kicking the can down the road isn't really a solution. This is a beautiful building. This is a building that will complement the common. It's something we're going to be able to be proud of. And it's something that I believe my grandchildren in 50 years will be proud of. The last point is that there's an economic cost to doing nothing. Let's consider that we vote this project down this evening. Okay, well, that doesn't take it off the list of needs. It's still going to need to be addressed. And so at some point in the future, we'll come up with a Plan B and most likely at that point, we probably won't like that price tag either. Moreover, if we have to extend the life of the current building, that is going to be a drain, in my opinion, on our precious cash flow. The current Town Hall is really a black hole for cash flow. To keep this going for a number of years, repairs, maintenance, code violations maybe, unpleasant surprises like elevators breaking down, that is going to be a tax on our cash flow. flow. And what that means, there's a two-pronged problem with that. The first is that it takes that cash flow away from other things and other needs that we have in the town. Roads, other buildings that need upkeep. And, and I just don't think it's a good policy to throw good money after bad, which is what we're doing by trying to extend the life of the current Town Hall. The second thing is, is that
Just a quick time check, you're at four minutes.
On that, it does potentially reduce our flexibility in our operating budget. Take, for instance, the fact that we budget $127,000 a year for snow and ice removal. Well, yeah, we got away with that this year, but in a normal winter, that doesn't come close to covering the cost. And at the end of the year, what do we do? We plug that gap with free cash. And so that total cost of whatever Plan B may be in the future, plus the money we're going to spend to keep this existing facility going, in my opinion, very well may be more than what we're talking about tonight. And so for those reasons, we believe that the time is now. We have a shovel-ready project that has been well-vetted with a maximum cost, and it's a high cost. $452 for the median household is a lot of money. We're not sugarcoating that, but we have to start to begin to attack this list of infrastructure needs. And if we can't do that when we have such a well-designed, well-vetted project like this, I think it's going to be really hard to make progress over time. And so for those reasons, the advisory committee voted to move forward, and we hope you agree. Thank you for your time.
For Capitol Budget, I'll recognize the chair, Brian Host.
This won't take five minutes because I can honestly say that there's been a lot of collaboration between the various committees, and many of the themes have already come up, and more will come up throughout the evening. Uh, but to give a quick summary, Capitol Budget voted zero in favor of this project, three against, there was one abstention, and it really came down to one word, which was price. Um, this is a project at a price that is very different than where it started. Um, and as that price moved from where it started to where it is today, um, it lost the support of the members of the committee. I do feel the need to reiterate, um, all compliments to the Town Hall Building Committee. Uh, they have done a phenomenal job within the context of the mandate that they were given, which placed very specific design constraints, um, on their process. Um, I do want to echo that this is a building that our children and our grandchildren um, can be proud of, uh, as they walk by it on the common, whether that be 50 years from now or 100 years from now. The design does have the potential to be timeless, and having seen two prior designs, that's the first time that I can say that. Um, I also want to share, uh, the core of the discussion that the Capitol Budget Committee engaged in, um, which was really about the financial context that we unanimously felt that every taxpayer should have the benefit of understanding, um, before casting their own vote and their own view on this standalone project, uh, because it's very important for you to understand exactly what's coming. Um, the draft warrant had several other articles in it, um, each of which was a capital item that is not currently being funded, um, through the Capitol Budget. Um, each of them represented a tax increase, um, and each of them was removed, um, but there was a vote by the select board to revisit those for the town meeting, and I would fully anticipate that you were going to be asked to vote on those, and each of them is a tax increase, so I want you to understand what's coming. Okay? Um, right now, when we get to the Capitol Budget article, you're going to see that there's $300,000 in there for roads. We get about another $200,000 from the state, um, and this year, we're going to spend about 500, the last 500,000 of funds that we had previously set aside. So those, those extra funds will be done at the end of this year. Um, next year, we anticipate that our road spending will be somewhere closer to a million. So that's a $500,000 gap at minimum. Um, and it is anticipated that will come to you as a request for, for incremental funding and, and taxation. Um, you're also going to see in the Capitol article, um, that we're about to get to, uh, that there really is no investment in the maintenance of any of our buildings, whether it be the school buildings or any of the other town buildings. And yes, there's a fly distracting me. Um, so that is unsustainable, whether it be Town Hall, whether it be the schools, whether it be any other building. Um, and there is, uh, I think, a, an anticipated starting request. It's probably somewhere in the area of about $1.5 million per year. When you add those two together, you're looking at another $500 to $600 per household in annual taxes on top of your existing, you know, roughly $11,800 bill. So it's, it's, um, it's a tax that's actually larger than the project that you have in front of you today. Um, that's before we get to fire police, before we get to the schools. Um, so you deserve that context, you know, have that context. Um, the last thing I would say is with regards to the existing Town Hall, um, we have repainted the building and, and we did repair the elevator. The elevator is 40 years old. It's a fairly normal cyclical thing. We're also going to be replacing roofs and A-Shack, and yes, good luck to the next person up here. Um, but in terms of the black hole concept, I just want to be completely clear, in the 10 years that I've been on Capitol Budget, we've spent $200,000 on Town Hall. So yes, we do, we absolutely have major items that need, are going to, 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 uh, to need to be repaired and/or replaced and/or maintained. We have not yet seen or felt a black hole
Time check, you're at four minutes.
And I'm respectfully done.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Steve Weller, 195 Hol Street. I have, uh, just two questions. Is the proposed renovated Town Hall going to be, going to achieve net zero greenhouse gas emissions? And the second question, will the Town Hall be constructed to satisfy the revised specialized stretch code that will be effective in the, uh, summer of 2024?
Thank you. Someone from the committee or either one of you or one of your experts want to respond?
My name's Phil O'Brien from Johnson Roberts. Uh, the, the first question, um, was about net zero, uh, net, net zero carbon. It's an all-electric building, um, no fossil fuels, uh, in the, in the regular operation of the building, with the exception of the, of the generator, which has to cycle itself once a week for an hour, just to make sure that it's functioning. The second question was about the stretch code. The stretch code, the, the building, um, is going to, um, apply for building permit, um, if this thing proceeds, um, sometime in the next couple of months, then its stretch code doesn't kick in until July. So it's designed to meet the current stretch code, not the future stretch code.
Thank you. Further discussion? Sir?
Hello, I'm Bobby Welkum. I live at 94th Avenue. Let's begin by dis- dispelling the notion that during the last time we voted on this in 2018, we kicked the can down the road. We didn't kick the can down the road. We rejected a plan we didn't like. And it seems that some element of our town government thinks that we're confused or we simply got it wrong. But they keep trying to sell us a Ferrari when we just want a Chevy. Not even a majority of our select board is voting for it. And it comes along with the false and self-composed condition that no other priority should be worked on until it's dealt with. The whole cost is necessary? No. We don't need a catering kitchen to generate revenue for the town. It's going to take a lot of ziti and crab cakes to cover $25 million. Along the way, we've also heard about, you know, this boogeyman that the state will come in and force us to become ADA compliant. Well, it's great that the elevator's fixed, but even if they did, it's not going to cost $25 million. The ADA doesn't require that elevators be clad in gold. There are many priorities in this town. The police have done an amazing job, and we have needed them in the last year, but their facilities are subpar. I speak to you under a tarp that is needed for when it rains. A tarp in our schools for when it rains. This is Cohasset. But even if Town Hall had to be first among all these things, we already said no to 15 million. We should say no to 25 million, and the answer should pause at a hard "not yet" until we get cost at a reasonable and that we're comfortable with. And because we haven't, we should answer no and send the message that Town Hall exists for us. We don't exist for Town Hall.
Thank you. The woman over on the side, and then I have Mr. Dormitzer next.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Madeline Richard. Next year, I'll have three children in the public schools, and I guess I'm looking for some clarification or just some direct comment of things that we've talked about. It's already come up with how this would affect future, um, money to go towards our schools. I think that we've all seen over the last few years that, uh, doing remote or doing things online or having our kids at home is just really not, um, a long-term solution. I think we've also seen that a lot of things that we might have gone into the Town Hall before can be done online now. Our children, unfortunately, just really do not have that flexibility. They'll be in these schools for upwards of 13 years, and I just want to know how approving this will affect the future costs that can go towards our schools.
Is there someone that would like to respond to that specific question?
Hello, my name is Jeanne Haley Dipold. I'm the vice chair of the Select Board. So first, um, I just want to identify that I voted no, um, for Town Hall, just in the interest of transparency, although I do, um, want to give my, my deep thanks to the Town Hall Building Committee for getting a real price on Town Hall, so we know what in fact the price is, and not just an estimate, but an actual price that we would have to pay if we actually voted for the Town Hall. Um, as it relates to questions about money and the math, so what we know, and Mr. Host alluded to this when he was talking about Capitol projects, he and I are both on the Long Term Financial Planning Committee for Cohasset, along with other members like Mr. Dial and Mr. McClellan. Um, what we know to date is that, um, the work of long-term financial planning has only really just begun. We are still crunching and looking at all the numbers, and we know that the town has hired, for example, engineers to assess the condition of our roads and sidewalks, and that estimate over 10 years to get us essentially up to par with respect to where we need to be is 15.9 million. We also know, thanks to our School Facilities Committee, that based on the assessment that has been done by our consultants, that we have needs in all of our schools, including our middle and high school. And specifically there, the School Facilities Committee, based on their work, has identified a list over the next 10 years within all of our schools of $50 million worth of repairs. So these are simply just repairs, um, and some renovation costs if we decide to do anything that would trigger our need to address code violations. And that list is approximately
So just a time check, you're at two minutes. Could you please wrap up the answer to the question?
Yes.
Thanks.
So that's approximately $50 million, not including any renovation or rebuild. So right now, the Select Board has voted to consider for the fall Town Meeting stabilization funds for roads and sidewalks and for that school repair list, among other school needs. A stabilization fund at a million dollars, for every million, it's $266 of a tax increase. And so if we were, for example, to do Town Hall plus, uh, $2 million in stabilization funds, that would land us approximately around $1,000 of a tax increase, or almost 10% if we did all of this at once. And the last thing I would say about the debt roll-off, because there has been discussion about capturing the Osgood debt roll-off, is that the stabilization funds will hit the tax rolls in December if there are successful votes for fall Town Meeting, at fall Town Meeting. And so the school stabilization fund and the roads and sidewalks will in fact capture that debt roll-off if that happens. But I believe that every project should be assessed at their true full price without regard to the debt roll-off.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Ralph Dormitzer. I live at 111 Atlantic Ave. I'm speaking as an individual, not as a member of any committee. I am part of the Capitol Budget Committee, and I'm also in the Sidewalk Committee, but I'm not speaking on behalf of either one. What I'm about to say should not be construed as a criticism of the Town Hall Building Committee or the new Town Hall that is being proposed. The town is at an inflection point. For the past five years or so, that we have lived within the constraints of Prop 2 and 1/2. We balanced the budget, covered our expenses, paid down the debt, addressed OPEB, funded stabilization accounts, and secured a AAA bond rating, all of which you mostly have heard. So what is the inflection point? It is a steep rise in taxes in the near future. Those, these predictable annual increases of 2 and 1/2% are woefully insufficient to fund those future expenses. Those expenses have resulted partially from years of deferred maintenance out of the town's physical infrastructure, including the Town Hall, but also from the needs and wants associated with the schools, the roads, the sidewalks, the playgrounds, the fields and courts, the police and fire station, and the harbor resiliency plans which are yet to come. The town cannot fund these with a 2 and 1/2% annual increase in taxes. If the current request for 23, 23.4 million for the Town Hall is any indication of the tax bill will be very large. There was an exception that the Town Hall renovations could have been funded out of operating income with an assist from the Community Preservation Account. In 2018, when the Select Board charged the Town Hall Committee with the Town Hall renovations, it was in the context of the failure of a previous request of 12.5 million and with a caveat of a net neutral tax impact on the residents, i.e., the expectation of that previous Town Hall construction project was no new taxation. My judgment is that there is a, is a breach of faith to ask for an override of the entire 23.4 million reversing an explicit commitment of a net neutral tax impact. The 22.3 million is also double the cost of the previous iteration of Town Hall that was rejected largely because of new taxation. And Town Hall is only one project among many that will require debt exclusions. This one will add about 4%, 4 and 1/2% of every real estate tax bill. Other projects will be significantly higher, and the total will be large. As a consideration to the taxpayers, the Select Board needs to forecast its best estimate of the total increases over the next five years. With that knowledge and consideration of what is reasonably acceptable, what is a reasonably acceptable total increase, I could anticipate an informed, productive, and robust debate on what and how much we can afford and fund. In the absence of that public debate, I do not recommend the current piecemeal approach to these wants and needs, and recommend you vote no on this article. Finally, you are not being offered a lower-cost Plan B for the Town Hall at this meeting, although that has been repeatedly requested. Moreover, I do not believe there has been any rigorous examination of a Plan B. Among these, and you probably have read it perhaps, is the purchase of the Oaks. Is that irrelevant? Not really. Now that the Butler property and formerly the Roy property is on Margent Street is on Now that the Butler property and formerly the Roy property is on Margit Street is being offered for sale with an asking-
Time check. You're at four minutes.
With an asking price of 18 million. It is a historic structure on a historic site. It was once even an office building. It has 1,800 feet of harbor front, nine acres, 112-foot dock. It is reasonable to ask, if you had 26 million to spend and the alternatives are replacing a 35-year-old office building or acquiring a property such as the Oaks for multiple public purposes and for historic preservation, and still have 8 million in your pocket, I think you would choose the latter. Thank you very much.
Lee Jenkins, Jerusalem Road. In addition to the 25 million dollars, approximately, how much is the interest over the 30-year mortgage? How much is the interest?
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand your question. Could you repeat that again and then we'll see if we can get somebody to answer it?
What's the interest cost for borrowing the 25 million or 23 million over 30 years?
Ah, I think he's asked, what is the interest cost over the 30-year mortgage? Is there someone that has that math handy?
Corey Evans, member of the Select Board. So to answer that question, there's kind of two things. One is what the total bond amount at the end would be, which we don't know. It will be less than 25 million, but it'll be determined by the amount that the project will cost. We're not going to bond money we don't use. And then if you wanted to get, put a number in the sand and have a fixed interest rate.
Yes, at a 4% interest rate over 30 years, the total interest payment would be 14 million, 14.4 million.
Thank you. Is there other discussion of any new points? Could I ask the crowd to please be quiet? Sir, go ahead.
Doug Schultz, Heather Drive. Full disclosure, I am a member of the School Facilities Committee, but I'm not speaking for them tonight. Just, I have two questions. One is, I just, as a point of clarification, the only thing that's a guaranteed maximum price here is the contractor's price, the 21 million that we talked about, not any of the other costs. If I could get confirmation on that and that that is only guaranteed on the construction documents that are currently in place, that there's other change orders that could occur that makes that cost go up. And the second is, if there's been a contract that's been entered into, is there any shared savings, is there a shared savings clause with the contractor in that contract? Thank you.
Can you respond to those questions? Okay, great.
Hi, John Lemieux from Vertex. We're your owners' project manager. Great question. As far as the breakdown, you are correct. Of the 25 million, 803 total project budget, the construction cost would be the 21.6 million. That is the amount that would be entered into a contract right after a ballot vote to say yes, because we already have the construction manager on board. As far as your comment about change orders and if those happen, the project budget includes about $1.5 million of contingency for just in case. Contingency that if not used, wouldn't be spent, and to the Select Board members' comment, wouldn't be bonded because we never spent it. Also, within the guaranteed maximum price, are a series of some allowances for just-in-case items. Again, any unused allowances come back to the town. As far as shared savings, shared savings isn't allowed on a municipal project. If it's saved, it's yours. It doesn't, there is no benefit to the builder for saving money. It all is the town's money.
Thank you. No, sir.
Rob Jeffers, 18 Spring Street. Before we talk about what we're doing here today, I'd like everybody to just try to imagine that we actually passed the Town Hall five years ago. What would be different today if that's happened five years ago? First of all, we'd have a nice new Town Hall. That would be done. We wouldn't have spent $200,000 on repairs. We wouldn't have spent another $1.7 million on this project. And, you know, we definitely wouldn't be talking about the Town Hall right here, right now. We probably would have spent that $2 million on fields and all these other things that we say that we want. We probably would have seen a presentation from the School Committee and not the Town Hall Building Committee. But we can't go back. We can't change what happened in the past. But we can learn from it. We can learn that. I've learned three things. One, prices go up. I know everybody wants this to be cheaper, but we keep going back at it. But I've never met anybody who went to and said, oh, I got somebody to quote me on some building on my house, some construction, went back to him three years later and it was so much cheaper. That just doesn't happen. It gets more expensive. The second thing that we need to remember is, you know, old buildings don't fix themselves. Great, it's only been 200,000. It's an old building. Bad things happen. If you don't maintain them, there are going to be new costs. It's just what's going to happen. The third thing is, this isn't going away. We can vote no. It's still going to come back. We are a town, and as a town, we need to have schools, we need to have public safety, and we need to have a town government. You don't get to be a town if you don't have those things. So we're going to have to deal with it. I am willing to invest in this now. I will be here to invest in the schools. I'll be here when we come to invest in the public safety. So where are we? Right now, we are at a point where we can either vote to move forward, you know, we can decide to invest in this town and we can actually try to get something done, or the option, as the capital management person said, you know, is that we can decide to not do anything. And what does that mean? That means that old building, we still have to spend money on fixing it. If HVAC goes, HVAC's not cheap. That's a million dollars. That's a million dollars that will not be going to, towards the schools or anything else. And let's be realistic about these new ideas, these new plans. When are we going to actually get them? Well, two years ago, the Select Board unanimously asked us for $750,000 for the plans that we're voting on today. One year ago, the Select Board unanimously asked us for $200,000 to get the prices that we're asking for, that we're voting on today. So that means any new options are at least two years away and a million dollars. And that's a million dollars not being spent on schools, not being spent on these other projects. I know it's hard. I know that we have other big things coming towards us. But I'm a very strong believer that if we wait until we have everything and we try to get many things done, we will end up getting nothing done. But if we start trying by getting one thing done at a time, before you know it, we will have many things done. I think we should vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got the gentleman over here and then Mr. Collins here.
Oh, boy.
Could I start with your name and address, please, sir?
Jeffrey Chubb. I live at 56 Black Rock Road. First off, yes, it's a wonderful building. It being around for my children and my grandchildren to see and be proud of later, judging by the historical aspect of us having to replace a building about every 30 years in this town, probably not my grandkids. In five years, if we had proved this five years ago, yeah, that's great. But in 25 years, it seems like we'd be talking about replacing this darn building all over again. If my kid breaks a toy, I don't go get him a new shiny toy. And that's what you guys are asking for. Administrators in this town are asking to be put in front of my children as well as our police and fire. That's unacceptable in my mind. Kids come first, period. This $200,000 line item is what we've been talking about in the last five years to fix up the Town Hall. And you guys, it's not a $25 million price tag. We just found out it's a $39 million price tag. That's a fun, fine line there. A gentleman talked about the 2 and 1/2% revenue increase on our town. I think that's a great number. But I don't know, I pay my taxes. I was looking at my in-laws' tax bills the other day. Their tax bill's gone up 40% in the last two years. So that 2 and 1/2% number is a real cute number to throw around, but it's not taking into account how high and how quickly our assessed values are increasing because Cohasset's one of the fastest-appreciating towns in the state. So this town doesn't seem to have a real big revenue problem. Seems to have an expense problem, which is kind of a government problem as it is. Please clap while I think of something else to say. That's fine with me. Thank you. I would also love to see, I don't know, I was here five years ago voting this thing down, and I'm here today, and it seems like judging by this gets voted down again, two years of planning, we're going to be here again, right? Can we vote on something? Once this gets shot down, then hey, guess what? 10 years until you guys can put this stuff back in front of us, because this is absurd. You guys are just keep, keep bringing it at us until you finally get your way. And maybe, maybe if there's repercussions to the actions of bringing us a 25, $39 million build after we already rejected a $15 million build, maybe it'll come with some common sense and do the Plan B, do the cheaper build that we asked for.
Be careful, sir. You're talking about people, so let's be a little polite.
Stakeholder in this town and you guys are asking a lot of my money.
I understand that, sir, and you're going to be a responsible, respectable stakeholder.
I understand. Well, you know, responsible is a lack of-
I'm asking you to just be polite.
So is there a way to put a 10-year stopgap where you guys can't keep coming back to us on the same things over and over again while our school deteriorates and the tarp's sitting over top of me here? If we could start focusing on the things that we said we wanted done five years ago, which is starting with the schools?
I live at 404 South Main Street. Have lived here, tracked here my whole life, been a long time. And I've seen things come and go in this town that have, some things have been done pretty well, other things have not been done very well. And one of the classic cases is that four years ago, we voted unanimously at this meeting to approve a new Town Hall. Now, the Town Hall that is being projected right now is essentially the same as we brought before you four years ago. Some changes, but it's basically the same. After we left the Town Meeting, there was an organized group of few people in town that came up with a sky is falling comments that this was going to do all kinds of terrible things to the town. And with a 900 vote at the town election, we lost by 27 votes. That's how much it was lost by. It was very, very unfortunate. The existing annex of the Town Hall, which some of you people may or may not know, was poorly designed, poorly built, and it was not maintained. It's in terrible shape. It's full of rot. It's, the mechanical systems have pretty much failed. It's a terrible piece of equipment where we house our town offices. Now, I've been accused of being a string-saving Yankee at times, and I sort of relish that charge. And I don't want to spend $25 million on a new building. But we have to spend the money. We need to, we need to improve our basic infrastructure in the town. We can't do everything at once. We have to pick things and get them done as they need to be done. And I have no problem with paying money for the schools, for repairing our roads, for looking at a new fire and police station. Those all things have to take their turn and come along. The Town Hall needs to be done. The old building has wiring from the previous, the 1920s. We still have post and tube wiring in that building. We've got, we've got toilet facilities that are just one step above an outhouse. We need to have, we need to have ADA-compliant accessibility to the buildings. This is, now it's 2023. It's not 1941. We need to improve the Town Hall. Nobody wants to see a big tax increase, but guess what? What funds our town is all of us sitting here, all paying our share of taxes, all doing our thing, all taking part in the operation of the town, volunteering for committees, giving of our time and talent to help keep the town going. And we've got another fine group of people over here that have put lots and lots of time and effort into bringing us forward a good project that'll work. It's $25 million. It's unfortunate, but we've got to do something. We can't not do something. Nobody has a magic wand and we can say, repair yourself, Town Hall. It's not going to work. And things are not going to get better, they're going to get worse. And getting worse means they're not going to get less expensive, they're going to be more expensive. So I put aside some of your arguments about the schools not being funded, of the roads not being taken care of. Let's take care of one issue at a time. And the big issue before us tonight is the Town Hall. And I strongly urge you, to reconsider, those of you who are against it, is to vote to improve our Town Hall. Thank you very much.
I've got a woman here, a woman here in the front, and the gentleman over there. And Mr. Grady. I would ask you, we've been on this for well over 45 minutes. I would ask everybody to please try to be brief and limit your remarks to new points.
Katie Dugan, 100 Black Rock Road. I stood before Town Meeting back in 2008 and asked the exact same question. And Ms. Dipold referenced the fact that we do have a long-range planning committee in process. The question I asked in 2018 was, when are we going to have a five- to 10-year capital plan? We are again looking at a major project. Ms. Dipold foreshadowed another $70 million in two projects for sidewalks and schools. And yet we do not have a complete capital plan for the town five years later. And so my question is to the Long Range Planning Committee and the Select Board, when are you going to have a capital plan for the town that includes all of these major projects and helps us as a community understand the trade-offs that we're being asked to make? Thank you.
Thank you. A woman right here. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Carrie Thompson, 756 Jerusalem Road. I think our town is very much in a problem with this debate, because I think we are better than this debate we are having. I don't know how we've gotten to a point where we've started pitting all of our public buildings against each other. We have a collective responsibility to invest in our town, to invest in our public buildings. Just because we care about the Town Hall project doesn't mean we don't care about our schools. It doesn't mean that we don't see upcoming issues with fixing our public safety building. So much work has gone into this project throughout the years by really dedicated town staff, by really dedicated citizens. And I think that as a citizenry, in order to have a healthy community, we have to have a dedicated citizenry that's involved in our public spaces. And also, we have to have infrastructure, and that includes our public buildings. I think it's fiscally irresponsible to not move forward with this Town Hall project. At some point, we are going to have to move ahead with it. It's only going to get more complicated, it's only going to get more expensive. We are several years down the road from approving a new school building and/or a new public safety building. That's why we need to do this now, so then eventually we can move forward with our other buildings. I don't think we should be pitting our public buildings against each other. I think we need to move forward with this project. I think it's responsible of us to do it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Evans, point of order. I'd like an answer to my question.
Okay.
I posed a direct question as to when we are going to hear from the Long Range Planning Committee in terms of a capital plan for the town.
Okay, we'll see if somebody can provide. I took that as a rhetorical question.
It was not a rhetorical question.
Okay, we'll see if someone can provide a very brief answer. That needs to be shorter than the question asked, please.
Hopefully soon.
Great, thank you.
No, I'm just kidding. I won't walk away. So we've had multiple meetings, as you may have seen, they're all publicly posted.
Seriously, if we don't have a real answer, it was a rhetorical question. So either, can you please tell us, either, I think we need a brief answer to the question.
So we are, we are continuing to move forward towards a long-range financial plan. There's still additional information we need to vet and work through. We intend to do it this summer. Our hope is to do it as soon as possible. We've been trying to work towards that, but as we also try to research responsible ways such as stabilization funds that provide us with more flexibility, we have to build that into our analysis. So I don't have a definitive date, but we understand and appreciate the need for one and are working towards it.
Thank you. A gentleman back there.
Good evening. Dan Tarpe, 12 Bates Lane. We are standing in a shovel-ready Cohasset project. This building was renovated at great cost in the early 2000s. At present, it's halfway through its service life, based upon the plans that were discussed at that time. We've got quite a bit of funding for it from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. We've just, the town has just gone back to the School Building Authority, asking for more money to put towards our schools. To get the original funds years ago, we stepped over a lot of other communities by saying we had a shovel-ready project. It was neither shovel-ready or well-planned. It was functionally obsolete the day we moved in. I know my kids were here at that time. It was structurally obsolete- It was structurally obsolete a couple of years later, to the point where we are now. The 800-pound gorilla in this room right now, having read the report of the architects that the town commissioned last year, is that this building is considered to be a teardown. And we are looking at, not so far down the road, coming up with the funds without a lot of state help to replace the senior, the senior, middle, senior high school. Somewhere in the order of 250 to 300 million dollars. That's the 800-pound gorilla in the room tonight, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. Sir?
Great, thank you. David Farag, 39 Beechwood Street. I was on the first two committees for the Town Hall Restoration Committee in 2008 and 2014, which did the feasibility study and an existing condition study. It went over the electric, the plumbing, the heat and cooling functions, which were all out of date at the time, and that was over 15 years ago. What people have to realize is that the two buildings, the old part of the town hall and the annex, which was the 1987 portion of the town hall, both were built before computers, the internet, and the American with Disabilities Act. So everything that was added on to those was all Mickey-moused and jerry-rigged and put sideways and upside down and what have you to try and make the building workable, which is what it's at today. The 1987 portion, back when the town built that, at the time, the mistake that they made at the time, the town here, was that they came up with a fixed price. And then at the time, they tried to stuff 15 pounds in a five-pound bag after it. They didn't look at the functions of what they were going to need going forward. And so therefore, when you go in the town hall, it's, you have to go sideways and, and then the windows and everything were built very shoddily, and we have leakage in there which still is there today. And finally, with the existing, there were two quick things in the existing conditions. One is the heating system. With an existing condition that they did in 217, we found out in the old part of town hall that we're heating town common. That is how bad the systems are and how porous that, that town hall is. So anything that we do there to repair it is going to help it out. And then finally, in the current part of the old town hall, is all of our systems, which you'll see, the telecommunications, what have you. We have an air conditioner, a 15-year-old air conditioner that runs to just keep that cool. And then the drainage goes out the window. And, and it's just, i- if that fails, the whole, all the computers in the town hall are going to go down. And don't bother calling them to complain because the telephone system is attached to it as well, and that's going to melt down as well. So the building is in great need of repair. And I see this as when we looked at the library years ago in 1996, when it moved from South Main Street to its current location. It was a very controversial issue at the time. And some people said, why do we need the library there? The internet was just invented, we're not going to need books anymore. Well, as you can see, the library is where it is today. It's one of the great civic institutions, not just of this town, but of the South Shore. And I, I know everyone is very happy that they took that vote back in 1996 to the library. And if you vote for this town hall and move it forward, and you vote for it in the ballot box, you're going to say the same thing. So I just ask you all to please vote for this, and let's bring our town hall and our town government into the 21st century. Thank you.
Sir?
Hello, Andrew Franklen, 51 Bayview, Bayview Drive. I just have a question, and I've been here for 25 years, and it seems like we've been talking about this the entire time. Have we looked at taking the old town hall and converting that into the administrative office space and just getting rid of the annex? Because this, this has been really two projects. It's renovating the old town hall, and I think the reasons years ago that we want to do that was three things. We have the Cohasset Dramatic Club there, we, we give flu shots there, and we vote there. And that was the primary reason, besides the historic nature of it, we wanted to renovate town hall for those three functions. Those clearly can be done elsewhere in our community. So have we seriously looked at getting rid of the annex building and converting the existing town hall into the office space that we need?
Is there someone that would like to respond to that? Thank you.
Yes, we have. That was part of the 2016 to 2018 process, and we did consider converting the auditorium to off, to just administrative space. But with the ceilings being as high as they were, we found that there was no way to do it in a way that would allow people to work functionally and not waste space. It was one of the options we considered, but we decided not to go forward that way.
Sorry, Karen. And then since 2016, with all the changes we've had in how people work, and in my company, we're three days at home and two days in the office, do we consider that hybrid work model as we look to build what essentially is the same-sized structure that was proposed in 2016? And that, that cost of taking the existing town hall, at the time, $14 million, could it have been done for $14 million? Could we do something with town hall to make it office space at a fraction of the $25 million?
Because of all the work that had been done previously, looking at all of the different options, and the conclusion that had been reached that the best option for the town and the one when we surveyed people, that people seemed to prefer as well, was keeping the town hall where it is and keeping it as the historic building with an administrative annex.
Thank you.
That was the charge of the selectmen.
Thank you. Mr. Evans?
Yep. Corey Evans, again, member of the select board. I was one of the members that voted in favor of the project. And I do want to address kind of the, the safety, the children, that part. This is a building that, as was just mentioned, you know, it was previously used by the Reversory Department. It's a building I think we should use more. It's a building that we used for the prom, pre-prom. It's a building that was constructed in 1850 with 1920s wiring, with no fire suppression, with front doors that don't always open. That's just the fact. It's also a building, the floor, after we looked at it, needs serious upgrades to be recommended to be used for events again. So that's just the crisis that building is in. And we can talk about it a few times, but that, we've seen that movie before, we know how it ends, we need to do something about that, period, or else we're putting town hall staff, volunteers, residents in danger. We've known about it forever. This is one plan. Is it expensive? That's up to everyone to decide. But something has to get done. We can't wait anymore. This is a great option because it's been vetted out, and I like all the questions. A lot of the questions have been asked, it's hard to address them all here. But it comes down to me, it just is a safety thing. That building needs to be addressed now. Period. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got Mr. Grady and then Mr. McGoldrick.
Good evening. I'm Paul Grady. I voted no. And I did some consideration. We're in a post-COVID environment right now. Work needs have changed, the dynamics have changed, people reporting in office have changed. People, as the gentleman said, are down to a three to a two-day work week. And do I see justifying $25 to $26 million on that? No, I don't. I also see that we have needs for our fire and safety, municipal buildings. I mean, we're asking a lot of our police and fire departments. They're out there risking their lives every single day to protect us. And those buildings, why aren't we giving those the same sort of attention? This school, these people looking at, these, uh, standing under these tops, most of our children go here. We're asking an awful lot of them. We're asking an awful lot of the teachers that are teaching them. When you have no air conditioning, you have rooms that are freezing. And so we're looking to spend $25 million to 25, 6 million, 26 million, I'm sorry, for 20 people in a building that's closed as of today at noon on Fridays, limited hours. Most of us are working from home, I'm not, a lot of us are in our offices. So getting back down to Cohasset, getting to town hall is rather inconvenient at a point in time. I can't get there. I don't think I've ever got there in town halls open unless I'm going to a meeting, then I'm going through a back door. So that's my reasons for voting no. I encourage it. I just think that there are compromises we can make. These kids are the most important things in this building. Our police and fire departments are the most important things keeping us safe. They've been very busy these last couple of days. I don't know if anybody's been down to the police department, but it's in sore need of some attention. Our fire department in sore need of attention. And these schools, well, that's a given, you just have to look over your head. So that's where I think that we ought to be sitting down, looking at prioritizing our needs, prioritizing the needs of the town hall. I think the town hall committee has done a Yoma's job with the charge that was given them. I do believe the charge was flawed. The voters said no in 2018, and the powers be at the time, did not listen. They didn't listen to you. And that's disappointing. So these guys have been laboring hard on a single-line project that I just don't think is necessary right now. And thanks so much.
Mr. McGoldrick?
George McGoldrick, 107 Border Street. When Mary and I moved here in 92, we spent years working to get the new schools done. And I believe in that timeframe, all three schools had funds appropriated to improve the schools. As we got older, I was the chair of the Police and Fire Committee in, I believe, 2000. And we spent years trying to figure out the best solution for that aged building 23 years ago. We came to town meeting, we had tremendous support until one elderly gentleman, who is probably my age now, stood up and said, well, how many people are in that building? And we said, well, during the day, there's X people in there. And it lost because of that one question. The same kind of conversations are happening tonight. People are not involved on a day-to-day basis, and they're not understanding what goes in to make this town as great as it is. So I'm asking you to look at it from a different perspective, whether you're young and have kids, or whether you've been, like my wife and I, they put three kids through this tremendous school system, and now we're dedicating ourselves to make this town better. Look at it from a financial perspective, because that's what we're talking about. We're talking about money. If this was to cost a dollar, it would be approved. But because, because it's going to cost $200 to $400 a year, people are against it. Look at it from a different perspective. If your tax bill goes up $400 this year, and goes up $500 because of the additional things that we talked about, and goes up $1,000 a year after for schools, that's one tenth of 1% of what your house value is on a $1 million investment. So think of this as a return on your investment. Am I willing to spend another $1,000 a year for my $1 million house? Heck, yeah. Anybody would do that investment. So please think of this as a return on your investment for the dollars we're doing. I think it's clear that everything that people have talked about tonight, we need schools, we need roads, we need new police and fire, we need a new town hall. Think of it in the perspective of the return on your investment. And I think when you look at your tax bill versus what your assessed value is, versus what your Zillow number is going up every year, I think you'll be happy that what everyone in this room has done to improve this town, improves your house value, it's a great return on your investment. I think we need to move forward with this. Thank you.
After Mr. Dick and then Mr. Reardon.
I rise to, to move the question, but I defer to Ms. Wheeler and to Mr. Reardon.
Great, thank you for both of those, for deferring, and then we'll go to your moving the question.
Meg Wheeler, 114 404 Sav. Mr. Dick and I had the exact same idea. Mr. Moderator, I respectfully request that we move the original question.
I had the same idea.
All right.
Okay, so the motion has been made to move the question. It's not debatable. We will proceed immediately to a vote. We'll do a voice vote, requires two-thirds vote for adoption. What we're voting on is only the question of stopping debate. We are not voting on the town hall question itself. We are voting on whether we're going to continue debate or stop debate. So all those in favor of the motion to move the question, which will stop debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. We will now proceed to a voice vote under the motion, the main motion under Article Five. Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. We'll do a voice vote first, I'll see if I can call it. If I can't call it, or if seven of you doubt my call, then we'll proceed to a hand vote, but otherwise we'll try a voice vote first. All those in favor of the motion under Article Five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
I'm afraid that's close, but I can't call it. So I'm, we're going to ask people to go to a hand vote, please. May I ask the tellers to please take their stations? Could I ask the folks in the stands up here on this side, can you slide down to your right, towards the back of the room just a little bit, make it easier so one person, we've got two tellers? Tellers, can you guys please take your stations now? Now? Tellers, please take your stations. All right, Skay, do you have the back? All right, you've got the stadium too then, right? Okay, all those in favor of the motion under Article Five, please hold your purple cards up in the hand. You're going to have to leave them up for a little bit so the tellers can get everybody. Okay, if you have your count, please write it down, tellers. Okay, tellers, you all have your count for the favor of, okay, in favor, you can put your hands down, thank you. All those opposed, please put your purple cards up in the air. I believe the people in the chairs can put your hands down, thank you for your patience. Stands, please keep your hands in the air. Select board, you, I think you've got counted with the chairs, so you're good. Select board, you, I think you've got counted with the chairs, so you're good. Okay, I have a tally. Votes in favor, one hundred fifty-six. Votes opposed, one hundred seventy-nine. The motion fails. We'll proceed to Article Six, Community Preservation Committee. May I have a motion in the form recommended to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption. For the Community Preservation Committee, I'll recognize Mr. Russell Penetti, the Chairman.
Good evening. Russell Penetti, 20 Parker Ave. This should be pretty easy.
Could I ask those who are leaving to please do so quietly and respectfully for people who are still staying?
This should be pretty easy. If you vote yes, then we will go with our statutory requirements under the CPA. If you should vote no, we're going to go ahead with our obligation under the CPA and do what we're asking right now. Under the Community Preservation Act, we're required to set aside a portion of our money into four different categories: open space, recreation, historical renovation or preservation, affordable housing, and then we have an administrative account. The first three get ten percent of our income, which this year is about six hundred thirty-two thousand, or sixty-three thousand two going into each of those categories. The administrative sub-account, we are putting thirty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars into that. And before people wonder, "Why? Could you spend that kind of money doing what you guys do?" We don't. Last year, and year-to-date, our expenses are around fifty-eight hundred dollars. Twenty-eight hundred of that is in the form of dues that we pay to the Community Preservation Coalition in Boston. What they do is they petition the legislatures, and they get money for us. The state match used to be, well, when it first started, it was a hundred percent, but everybody knew that wasn't going to last. And over the last couple of years, they've brought it back up to where you're looking in the twenty percent range as a match on our money. So, since there's really nothing more to add to that, I'm not going to add any more to that. I would say that I have been with the CTC for twelve years now. We've always had great support from Town Meeting, and we're very grateful for it. And we appreciate your helping us out tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and the Advisory Committee has likewise recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? Mr. Dick.
Mike Dick, 27 Parker Ave. I'm a member of the Capitol Budget Committee. In my Town Manager's motion packet, Article Six, there's a paragraph that states, "And further subject to approval," oh, I'm sorry, I just wasted everyone's time.
You know, it's a fair point. I'll make the point in case anyone else does. That paragraph which Mr. Dick is referring to, which begins, "And further," says, "Subject to approval of Article Five." But Article Five was just not approved, so that paragraph, while still in the motion, will be of no meaning.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote, motion under Article Six. It does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Seven, Unpaid Bills From Previous Years. Quite nicely, there are no unpaid bills. So may I have a motion that this article be indefinitely postponed? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. All those in favor of indefinite postponement, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is indefinitely postponed. Article Eight, Supplemental Appropriations For Fiscal 2023. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. Requires majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our Town Manager, Chris Senior.
As was described in the warrant that went to everybody's home, what's in here today are, one, is every Town Meeting transfer to the 143 TV, the money that comes in from Verizon and Comcast, we send back out to the cable station to Rite Self. The others are all for expenses that ran up for a variety of reasons, police and fire in particular, because of manpower problems, which we're hoping to solve. So we have to keep staff on both of those departments. Legal, there was a lot of expense for several pieces of litigation this year, and the interest on debt was explained. That was a borrowing that was not after Town Meeting, so it's a small amount of money that needs to be set aside for the interest payments.
Thank you. For the Select Board, I'll recognize Corey Evans.
My apologies for coming in under false pretenses. I'm here actually as a member of the 143 TV Advisory Board.
Apologies, sorry.
That's okay. I didn't interrupt you. That's my apologies. I do want to recognize just Don Royne, who's the Director of the Channel right there behind the camera. Thank you, Don, for all you do. Last year, we did also lose a member, Peter Richardson, of our committee. He was someone that many of us knew in this community, served on Select Board campaigns, just an amazing man. We missed him on the committee. This year has been huge for 143 TV. We redid our website, and now you can live stream 143 TV on 143tv.org. So please go to that website. You can watch school committee meetings, great lacrosse games, everything is on there, easy to watch as long as with the schedule. We also upgraded FiOS customers to an HD broadcast. Those on Comcast, sorry, you'll have to wait a little bit longer. But we, the committee is always looking for new volunteers because we're entering a new chapter of really reinvigorating a public access TV station. So please, sorry, please support this, and if you can, donate your time so we can cover some cool stuff in town. Thank you.
Thank you. The Select Board recommends approval by a vote of five to zero. Advisory Committee likewise recommends approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote, motion under Article Eight. Does require majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Nine, Stabilization And Other Special Funds. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Requires majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our Town Manager, Chris Senior.
There's one small change in the motions that you'll notice. This is a two-hundred-and-twelve-thousand-dollar contribution to the OPEP trust fund. That was planned to be. It was just missed when we were preparing the warrant, so it was already in the conversation. The money's there, and it's part of our commitment to continue to fund OPEP. So that is in the motions. The money's available. It just inadvertently left out as we were printing the warrant. Otherwise, the other two contributions are part of standard contributions from the water fund and the sewer fund for future projects.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The Advisory Committee has also recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Does require majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Ten, Capital Improvements Budget. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Motion has been made and seconded. Requires majority vote for adoption. For the Capitol Budget Committee, I'll recognize the Chair, Brian Host.
Really, just one key clarification on this. So the request is for one point four million dollars of spending. You'll see underneath the table, there's a line that says that the amount should be raised and appropriated from taxation and other general revenues, which is an indirect way of saying that there will be no borrowings to support these capital items. The second item that I want to bring to your attention is that each of the items on this list are fundamentally replacements of existing in-use items. So there's really no investment taking place in any types of new capabilities, technologies, upgrades. Certainly, when we reach end-of-life, we try to do the right thing with regards to the replacements. The one item that I think is a step forward are the schools line number five, the twenty-eight interactive smart panels. We do have end-of-life on projectors in those rooms, and the next-generation technology is these interactive smart panels. I can tell you, this is effectively the nationwide standard, having visited about twenty colleges in the past few months, as well as several high schools. So this is a step in the right direction. This is the first building. We'll see that across the other, across the other two buildings that have yet to be done in future years. And I also just want to reiterate that with regards to the roads and sidewalks, you see the three-hundred-thousand-dollar number here. Again, that's matched by two-hundred-thousand from the state and another five-hundred-thousand that we have in existing funds to get us to the million-dollar spend that we are going to undertake this year. So hopefully, you see progress on roads and sidewalks, more progress. Obviously, there was visible progress this past year. But with regards to next year, we will need to fund that gap. And what's missing here is, again, any major investment in major maintenance items for our buildings. And hopefully, we start to have those funds available to make those investments in the future. That's it from Capitol.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Advisory Committee has also recommended approval by a vote of eight to, sorry, seven to zero. Is there discussion? Mr. Avery.
Richard Avery of 22 Surrey Drive. A very simple question, and it may just show my ignorance, but project number one, eight diesel bus buses for ninety thousand, is this like a net after trade-ins? Is this a one-year lease payment?
None of the above. This is a, this is the Capitol Budget's contribution towards the lease cost on that fleet. Several years ago, we moved from owning really old, very expensive to maintain buses. We were spending about a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year in maintenance, coming out of the revolving fund, the transportation revolving fund at the school. We started receiving requests for new buses, and we looked at the entire fleet and realized that the right answer was to stop spending fourteen thousand five-hundred dollars per year in maintenance on old decrepit buses, and get out of the ownership business entirely and move to leasing a fleet, turning that fleet over basically on the expiration of the warranty, which got us out of the maintenance business entirely. So we capped the school's contribution at the historical maintenance number. Capitol Budget agreed to pick up the difference. And the benefit to the school, although their number has stayed flat, is that they get new buses every several years as opposed to running around twenty-year-old buses and having maintenance problems. So long-winded answer, but this is the Capitol Budget contribution towards that total program cost, which includes both the buses and no longer maintenance.
And that total program cost would be what?
I don't have that number in front of me.
Considerably more than...
I would say it's about, I would say it's about two-hundred thousand on the nose.
Okay.
Of which approximately one-fifty is lease cost, and there's about fifty thousand dollars in terms of just very, very basic maintenance costs. We blow tires. We obviously have to replace, you know, replace oil changes, things of that nature. It's about fifteen-hundred dollars per bus, per year.
Somehow, that doesn't strike me as a capital item, but an operating item.
Which, the lease of buses?
Next year, will we be spending ninety thousand dollars?
That's correct.
On eight diesel school buses?
Yes, correct. It's a recurring annual lease cost on school buses.
I thought a capital item was once something you paid once every five years, or every ten years, or every twenty-five years.
That's a possible interpretation. The specific definition of a capital item is an item...
What's the depreciation on this item?
The depreciation, okay, first of all...
Okay, I made my point, which is I don't think this is a capital item. It should be in the operating budget. Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. I would just like to clarify, and I think that's a very reasonable question. I mean, you also see other lease decisions that are made from time to time. Typically, we buy. There are certain circumstances where it does make sense to lease. We found this to be one of them, specifically because we wanted to force the turnover of the buses and stay out of those long ownership periods that get us into very high maintenance costs. But just to be clear, the definition of a capital item, as defined by the town, is something that costs more than ten thousand dollars and lasts more than eighteen months. Okay? Buses cost more than ten grand and last more than eighteen months. So then it becomes a question of how do we pay for them? Okay? We can buy them and borrow and, you know, run the debt cost through, or we can do the math and come to the conclusion that the lease was the right way to go, which is what we did.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Under Article Ten, requires majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Ten, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Eleven, Departmental Revolving Funds, Annual Spending Limits. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Requires majority vote for adoption. Our Town Manager, Chris Senior.
This is an annual, an annual article that's required on the Municipal Modernization Act. Just to reaffirm, these have all been approved in the past. So all these funds currently exist.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and the Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of nine to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Requires majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Eleven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Twelve, Allocation Of Funds For One-Time Cost. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Requires majority vote for adoption. Our Town Manager, Chris Senior.
There are two additions to what you found in your warrant, and I'll cover those first. It's a removal of thirty-five thousand from a fund called Sale Of Cemetery Plots that's been accumulated for quite some time, and DBW needs that to do some upgrades and maintenance to our cemeteries this summer, and to continue the efforts to improve record storage and maintenance. The old system was quite old and done on paper, and it really needs to be upgraded, so that will move towards that. And then ten thousand dollars for the lowerways fund, that's something we do annually, and again, it was inadvertently dropped earlier, and that is used by the harbor master to do various repairs during the spring and summer. There are two others that were in the warrant. As you see, one is fifty thousand dollars for IT network and security-related upgrades. That's part of our ongoing efforts to maintain the network and to keep it secure, and this is in addition beyond the capital upgrades. And the largest one is the most important. It was a big priority for the schools, and we're glad we were able to find the money to do this. This will fully fund full day kindergarten next year, and the hope is that after that, the additional money we'll get from the state will fully fund it going forward. So that's the three-hundred-thousand-dollar ask there.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and Advisory has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Under Article Twelve, does require majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article Twelve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article Thirteen, may I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. It does require a majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our Town Manager, Chris Senior.
This is an annual housekeeping article. It's required anytime we do work in the water, and this, for example, affects the project we just completed at the Parker Ave. Boat ramp. So this is something that we need to do to make... So, this is something that we need to do to maintain our ability to work in the Chapter 91 intertidal zone for future projects.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Advisory Committee has also recommended approval by a vote of nine to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. The motion under Article 13 does require majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article 14, Additional Real Estate Exemptions Annual Renewal. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded, requires majority vote for adoption. Town manager, Chris Senior.
This is another annual update. This just keeps in place tax reductions for qualified elderly veterans and legally blind taxpayers. It's something that the town has done for many years, and the assessors have recommended this be maintained, as well as the Select Board and Advisory Committee.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Advisory has recommended approval by a vote of nine to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Motion under Article 14, requires majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 14, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. We're now 2 hours and 20 minutes in. We've got 11 articles left. I think we definitely can get through them tonight. I'm going to call a five-minute break for just to quickly stretch our legs. I know that's disappointing in the short run, but I think it will give us some stamina to power through the rest of the articles in good humor and with good respect for each other. So, five-minute break, and we'll reconvene in five minutes. I would ask that everybody who can stay, please stay. We don't want to lose a quorum. Okay, could I please ask everyone to take their seats? Could I ask everyone to take their seats now? We'll proceed to the motion under Article 15. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Mr. Jenkins? May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion under Article 15 has been made and seconded, requires majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize the town manager, Chris Senior.
The changes to the South Shore VOTech Regional Agreement, of which Cohasset was a founding member, by the way, fundamentally revolve around the addition of Marshfield. So, Marshfield will be joining the consortium. That will spread the cost. It will also reduce the guaranteed seats that Cohasset has. That said, Cohasset hasn't reached its guaranteed number, which is in the 60s, I believe, for many, many years. So, there's only eight kids currently going from Cohasset. So, there'll still be plenty of room, and Cohasset kids, if we ever get to that number again, will certainly be able to compete for those other seats. So, fundamentally, what this does is allow Marshfield to join, and there are some other technical changes that really just comport the agreement with modern language on regional school districts.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, and the Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Motion under Article 15, requires majority vote for adoption. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article 16, the Veterans Valor Act. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded, requires majority vote for adoption. For the Select Board, I'll recognize Paul Grady.
I will stand in for Mr. Grady until he returns, but the Veterans Valor Act is a tax work-off program that the state allows us to adopt for our veterans. This will enable veterans to work off up to $1,500 in taxes based on their volunteering for the town at an hourly minimum wage rate if they so choose to do so. The Select Board is proposing to adopt this and begin phasing it in, for example, offering this up to 10 individuals if they're interested. We do believe, based on our discussions with our Veteran Services Officer, Mr. Mahoney, that there is interest, and this is something that the veterans at the last Memorial Day ceremony asked the town to consider and adopt, and we think it's reasonable and would urge you to adopt it.
Thank you. The Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote, does require majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 16, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Been made and seconded, requires majority vote for adoption. Our town manager, Chris Senior.
Well, this may seem like déjà vu because something similar was approved in December. What this actually does is more directly have us removed from civil service. This was something negotiated with the police union. Everyone's in favor. The police chief is actually salivating, waiting for us to be able to hire under our own system. The state has set a sitting now on more than a dozen or 14 of these petitions. The state legislature won't move on them since the town's acceptance of this act predates the home rule measures. Council says we can actually go ahead and just vote to step out, and we'll send a letter to civil service saying, "Thank you. It's been fun. We're going our own way." So, this vote will then make that possible, and we'll still have a home rule petition option should we be able to pursue it, but we don't have to go that way.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The Advisory Committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Again, requires majority approval. All those in favor of the motion under Article 17, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion has passed unanimously. Article 18, Stormwater Management Bylaw Revisions. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded, requires majority vote for adoption. We're going to have a brief video made by our conservation agent, Charlotte Peckdahl.
My name is Charlotte, and I'm the Cohasset Conservation Agent. Unfortunately, I'm able to make it to town meeting tonight, but I'm here to present the stormwater bylaw changes that are administrative and procedural in nature that we are proposing for you tonight. I will summarize them quickly. We are clarifying our amended stormwater permit procedures. We're proposing to add a three-year expiration date to our permits, and we are also looking to clarify some of the language about site inspections and enforcement. So, I'll start with the first section in 223-9. Mostly, we wanted to clarify the amended permit procedural process, that it's pretty much the same as the initial process. If the changes are significant enough, you know, we may ask for an amended permit. So, we've been adding the language in 223-9, 10, and 11 to kind of explain what documents are required, what the process is. And a lot of the language was pretty much just added in for our full stormwater permits and for our administrative stormwater permits. And so, we clarified that throughout our bylaws. We already have a process in our rules and regulations about amended filings, but we wanted to further clarify it in our bylaws to be much clearer. And then, the second change that we're proposing is that we are asking to add a three-year timeframe to our permits. When the stormwater bylaw was created, we did not specify how long the permits would last for, so we're proposing three years, and it is the same timeframe as our wetlands permitting under the state act and our bylaw. So, we wanted to make the stormwater permits last the same time as a wetlands permit would. And one of the reasons for this is that oftentimes, a project will often have a wetlands permit and a stormwater permit, so we wanted the time period for both permits to be the same. And we did add extension procedures of up to one additional year, and we clarified the process for that in the bylaw, mostly in the new section, 223-11, where we're kind of saying what documents are required, how the hearing process will go. And again, this is all exactly the same process as it would be for an initial permit application. So, those are the majority of the changes that we're proposing tonight. And then, we did add some clarification language about site inspections and a few minor things about show cause enforcement and fines for noncriminal disposition. These changes were also recommended by our town council, and all of the language that you're seeing tonight has been reviewed and approved by town council and by the Conservation Commission. So, with that, we'll turn it over to any of our representatives. They'll be here tonight in person, and we thank you again for your time.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Advisory has recommended approval by a vote of seven to zero, and the Conservation Commission has recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote, requires majority vote for adoption. Oh, sir, sorry.
If I can, I'm a non-resident, but my name is Steve Bjorkman.
Sorry, we don't let nonresidents speak. Thank you.
Okay.
We'll proceed to, is there any other discussion by a resident? Thank you. All those in favor of the motion under Article 18, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article 19, Publication of Building Permits Issued. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. Requires majority vote for adoption. I'll recognize our town manager, Chris Senior.
This is a modernization update. Historically, the town's been required to put these in a paper of general circulation. Unfortunately, there is no real paper of genuine circulation at Cohasset anymore. It's not cost prohibitive like the Boston Globe, and not everyone gets that. This puts the town building permits up on the town website, so people can see it daily. It also has them physically available in the town's building department, so anyone can see that. And if anybody wants to, you could actually just sign up for an account on Permanise. It's free, and you could check any permit at any time through our electronic website. So, this just updates that. No longer has to be published, but it does keep it fully accessible.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. The Advisory Committee recommends approval by a vote of eight to zero. Is there any discussion? Thank you. We will proceed to a voice vote under Article 19, does require a majority vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 19, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Thank you. Article 20, Zoning Bylaw Amendments. Amend Article 1 Authority Purpose and Intent to Article 13 Administration. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded, requires two-thirds vote for adoption. For the zoning bylaw committee and the zoning board, I'll recognize Mr. Tom Callahan.
Thank you. Tom Callahan, 35 Hillside Drive. I am the Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Committee and of the Planning Board. Just briefly, the bylaw committee has been in operation since last summer. Our predecessor, the Bylaw Working Group, all told, the two of us have been working for two years on these things. We are undertaking a comprehensive review and update of the bylaw probably for the first time in over 35 years. Even though we add many things to the bylaw, it hasn't really been looked at from top to bottom in a very, very long time. There'll probably be two, at least two steps, possibly three steps. We are doing some groundwork articles tonight, which are mostly administrative and housekeeping changes. There'll be a number of changes brought forward in the fall town meeting and then very likely next spring's town meeting. I just want to recognize before we go forward, knowing the late hour, I want to just jump right into them, but helping us with this process has been a member of the KP Law Firm, the Honorable Judith Cutler. Judge Cutler is a former Chief Justice of the Land Court, which is one of the primary trial courts for dealing with zoning and land use issues. So, I'd like to just introduce her and recognize her and her help tonight. If we could have whoever's doing the first slide for us for this article?
Is there anyone who knows how to operate the slides for Tom?
What I'm just going to show you tonight is the summary that we've had done. They were being handed out before the meeting, and the actual text of the articles are in your warrant. The first article here, Article 20, is to deal with our existing zoning articles, 1 and 13. The authority and the purpose of the bylaw. We are essentially merging the two and doing some housekeeping changes, which are pointed out in the three bullets. And the only substantive change to it is that we're adding three new purposes for the reason that we have a zoning bylaw. We have six in the existing bylaw, and this is to bring in some more modern concepts about housing the environment and the fact that we now have a master plan. So, it's pretty straightforward. It's mostly housekeeping.
Thank you. The Select Board has recommended approval of Article 20 by a vote of five to zero. For the Advisory Committee, I'll recognize Patrick Kennedy.
Thank you for hanging in there for the zoning articles. The Advisory Committee voted to recommend all six zoning bylaw change articles to town meeting. That's warrant articles 20 through 25. The charge given to the zoning bylaw committee was direct, and they have fulfilled it. The zoning bylaw committee has held multiple public forums open to the public in which they presented all the issues that are raised in these minor amendments to the zoning bylaws. As Tom mentioned, the zoning bylaws will undergo a comprehensive review, and there will be more substantive changes that will be coming to the next town meeting and the next town meeting after that. The town was presented with multiple opportunities to comment on these changes. The town was invited to attend the public forums. At the public forums, such topics were addressed, as will be addressed in the zoning bylaw changes. The Cohasset Harbor was addressed. The village bylaws were addressed. The public forums addressed housing and multifamily compliance. The public forums addressed climate resiliency and other environmental impacts of our zoning bylaws. A fourth public forum this year introduced the changes that are being discussed and presented to you tonight. The zoning bylaw committee has been staffed with experts. There are two attorneys on the zoning bylaw committee, experienced in zoning matters in the town. Tom, who's been many years as a member of the Select Board, as a member of the Planning Board, as a member of the Conservation Commission, and David Farag, who's also a well-known attorney who has dealt with zoning issues in town for many years. There's also a citizen developer on the zoning bylaw committee, as well as the Chair of the Select Board and an architect, who also has been a member of the Planning Board and former Chair of the Planning Board for many years. There were multiple public meetings where these changes were addressed, and members of the public had an opportunity to attend, both in person and remotely, all of the public forums, all of the open meetings. The zoning bylaw committee engaged a subject matter expert, Judge Cutler, who's here with us today, one of the foremost and prominent judges in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts who knows zoning bylaws in and out. So, for all those reasons, the Advisory Committee heard from the zoning bylaw committee. We studied the language of all the changes that are being presented tonight and voted unanimously to recommend them to town meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. The Planning Board recommended approval of Article 20, motion under Article 20 by a vote of six to zero. Is there discussion? And just to be clear, we're obviously, they summarized the process that led to Articles 20 through 25. We're voting on each one of, discussing them and voting on each one of them independently. So, we're now discussing Article 20. We'll proceed to a voice vote, does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 20, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article 21, Zoning Bylaw. Amend Article 2 Definitions. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting? Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded, and again, two-thirds required for adoption. Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, again, two-thirds required for adoption, and again, for your zoning bylaw committee and the zoning board, Tom Callahan.
Thank you. Thank you. Article 21 is an amendment of Article 2 in the zoning bylaw, which contains our definitions. There are a couple of minor changes, which are noted on the next page of this slide, but the most substantial change is to change the definition of height. And because of things that are going on with permits before the planning board and zoning board, this was an issue that we felt we needed to address as soon as possible. There's two changes to the definition of height. Number one, we will now be requiring more data points at the bottom of the measurement of height along the ground. Previously, we'd get anywhere from two to four measurements from a developer who would say, you know, and from that decide, well, that's the mean grade of the property, and that's where I'm going to start my measurement of height. We are now going to be requiring 12 equidistant points around the foundation for data points, so that we have a better sense of what the mean grade is. And then on the height, at the top of the measurement, we are simply making every roof treated the same. The top will mean the top. And right now, with respect to a pitched roof, it's the only one we give a different definition to, we measure a pitched roof to the midpoint of that roof, and we allow for five feet more above that. We will now be measuring that under this definition to the peak of that roof, so that all roofs are treated the same, that they will be measured to the highest point. This is done both for common sense and logic, but it's also done to close a loophole that essentially allows for five feet to be put above the 35-foot height limit. The 35-foot height limit is what we currently have in town, we've had it for decades, and we see no reason to have a loophole where there's possibility of a 40-foot high structure, especially in residential areas. And I can tell you from where my planning board had on large home reviews, we are getting the message that people do not want to see 40-foot houses in our residential districts. Those are the changes there.
Thank you. The select board recommends approval of the motion under Article 21 by a vote of five to zero. Advisory committee recommends approval by a vote of eight to zero. And the planning board recommends approval by a vote of five to one. Mr. Brewer?
Clark Brewer, 262 North Main Street. I am a member with Tom on the zoning bylaw committee, a senior member of the planning board of 15 years, and was chairman of the master plan committee adopted in 2019. The proposed change in height definition from pitch roof midpoint to rooftop lowers the allowed maximum height of five, by five feet from what's currently allowed. Now, five feet might not sound like much, but it will have a significant impact to many property owners in the future and create a volumetric preference for flat roofs with no mechanism for relief, except a standard variance from the zoning board of appeals. The definition change was not part of our town council's diagnostic review of the bylaw. The definition change was not a recommendation of the adopted master plan. The zoning bylaw committee review of the height definition was brief and done without the benefit of analysis or examples, achieving only a 3-2 vote of support in committee. Typically, we evaluate zoning changes through a careful consideration process that addresses systemic problems to achieve a positive impact for property owners with a comprehensive understanding of what the unintended consequences might be. This didn't happen. The definition effectively reduces one-and-a-half-story projects like garages and family rooms to one story, and reduces two-and-a-half-story projects like houses and commercial buildings to two stories. The impact will be most significant for projects in the village, which would likely be reduced to a two-story minimum. Efforts to revitalize the village through mixed use has been a goal of this town for decades, with the major village zoning change in 2007. Now, there may be some concern about recent new houses in the neighborhoods, but we have had only an average of nine new houses a year over the last 18 years, as reported in the master plan. The height change doesn't address single-family development pressure, it only limits design and options for property owners. As part of the planning board's large home review, we've really only seen one example where the height was a major issue. I look forward to a thoughtful discussion here on the floor of town meeting, and respectfully request members of the town meeting to vote against this restrictive zoning height definition change. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Mr. Farag?
David Farag, 39 Beechwood Street, and I'm on the committee for the zoning bylaw committee. In my whole life, living here in Cohasset, growing up in Cohasset, having my legal career here in Cohasset, and being on the different committees in Cohasset, I've never heard the complaint that the height of Cohasset houses is too short. But through the zoning bylaw and through the master plan and from listening to all the people and the residents, we have heard the complaint that some of the buildings in Cohasset are too tall, and there's a reason for this. And the reason is, there's a loophole in the definition of height, and it has to do with the way that we measure height. And this gets rid of that loophole, so that all the buildings will, or excuse me, in residential and commercial, the way that they're going to be measured with this definitional change will be to the required amount that they're supposed to be in the bylaw. And I think it's a very simple, easy solution to do, and it's one that we should take forward. Our towns around us, like Kingdom and Situate, they only allow two-and-a-half-story housing as a maximum, and they have 35 feet as well in most residential areas. So with that being said, I would ask everyone to please vote for this and just change the measure for height, so that 35 feet will be the proper 35 feet. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? I will caution you, you can only speak twice on one question, so if you speak now, that's your second time.
Okay, thank you. I just want to point out that, yes, Mr. Brewer referred to a diagnostic that KP Law did, looking over our whole bylaw, which has been great, it's been the basis of a lot of our work, but it's not the exclusive part of our work. The zoning bylaw committee and its predecessor have been looking at this since the get-go, because the issue of height has come up again and again and again. I disagree that 35 feet cannot accommodate three floors, and I'll correct my friend, Mr. Farag, that the Situate bylaw actually has their height limit as 35 feet or three stories. And if you consider a residential story, a generous residential story being 10 feet, you can get three stories within that. I also think it's ludicrous to think that the design aesthetic of Cohasset is going to be thrown out the window, and we're going to suddenly have flat roofs everywhere. And to give you a concrete example, there've been a lot of complaints on 143 about the size of certain buildings that have been going under construction. The building at 1 Pleasant Street is a colonial design, pitched roof. At its peak, it's 37 feet 10 inches. So it would have to take 2 feet 10 inches off had it been built after this definition change. It's using dormers, I suggest to you, it would still be three stories with the loss of 2 feet 10 inches. I don't think this is a radical change that's going to affect design. I think it's bringing common sense and, again, closing a loophole. And our neighboring towns are doing something similar, and, again, in the fall, when we get to the table of dimensions, we have told, we have told the zoning board who's concerned about garages, we are going to be looking at that 35-foot number in different parts of town. We may need to change it from here to there. But clearly, we are seeing the trend, yes, there's a project that came recently that really triggered this discussion, but we are trying to be proactive, because the trend in the development that is coming before the boards is bigger, 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 as everybody with the high prices are trying to maximize their return, maximize their square footage. The town long ago set the 35-foot limit, that's what we want to keep it to. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Sir?
Hi, Paul Calery, 205 Sawyer Street. Just because I'm not sure how it works, but could someone explain to me what quorum is, and do we still have it here?
I'm sorry, I missed the word. Could explain to you what?
Quorum? Do we, do we have a quorum in this room?
Um, we have a, a quorum is presumed until somebody requires a quorum count, and then we determine that we don't.
Is that not what we're doing here now, is voting?
A quorum is presumed unless somebody affirmatively asks for a quorum count, and then we have to take one, and then we discover whether we do or don't have one.
Could you just tell me and the others in the room, so is it based off of what the original entrance number was?
No, 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 sorry, if someone calls for a quorum count, we will have to count all of the voters in the room. The quorum requirement is 100.
And what is quorum?
Quorum requirement is 100.
Oh, 100, oh, I see.
Yes, so by my eye, it looks like we, by a little bit, still have it.
Yeah, yeah, no, I thought it was based off of original attendance at tonight's meeting.
Nope, it is 100.
So if I could ask Mr. Brewer to explain a little bit further, because you brought up some interesting points about, it also affects garages and one-story buildings and two-story buildings. Could you explain to the rest of us how this reduction in height, I hear the 35 feet, the 35 feet, but you touched on referencing smaller buildings?
Well, that's, that's right. The, the height definition applies to the 35-foot height for buildings that's, that's across the entire town, but it also applies to the definition of the 15-foot height, which is for garages. In the zoning bylaw, parts of buildings that can be closer to the, to the property line because they're lower, or 15 feet. It currently, you can go to the midpoint of rafter for those 15-foot or story and a half structures, garages, whereas the proposed change would lower the, a garage or like a family room that can be close to the property line. One thing that we, and we didn't talk about that in committee, really, at all, as an issue. You know, there are other things that use height as a definition, walls, fences, but those really aren't affected by this, this, this change.
Thank you. Is there further discussion? Sir?
Chris Flex, 17 Pleasant Street, also a member of the planning board. I'll be brief, it's late, we want to get to the point here. We don't really have a building height definition today. Approval of this article would give us a building height definition. If you want higher building height limits or lower building height limits, this would put us in a position where you don't need to be an architect to understand what the building height limit is for a particular building. So I encourage you to vote in favor, so that we can have building height limits here in Cohasset. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion?
Yeah, I'm on the zoning bylaw subcommittee. I've been on two zoning things in Boston, I rezoned the Fenway, or is on the planning and zoning, did another neighborhood in Boston when my office was in there. This, this committee was formed at the, at the request of the people in this town who wanted some controls on their zoning. And height is very important. And so I, I can't really add to what Chris just said, that was very well spoken, so I urge everyone to, to vote this favorably, and so we can go home. Thank you.
Is there further discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote, does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 21, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Although, although opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The motion does pass by the requisite two-thirds vote. We'll proceed to the motion, to Article 22, zoning bylaw, amend Article 3 establishment of zoning districts. Let me call to your attention, there is one typo in the warrant. The motion packet, as you know, references the text in the warrant, let me call that to your attention and correct it, so when I call for the motion, we will be moving it without a typo. On page 21 of your warrant, middle of the page, large paragraph B, it's a six-line paragraph, in the fourth line, it reads, "of water, comma, the district boundary runs parallel to the top," and then it should be the word "of." Currently says PF, PF should be OF, "of," so it should read, "of water, comma, the district boundary runs parallel to the top of the bank or the shoreline at such distance." May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting with that one typo corrected as I just read? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, does require two-thirds vote for adoption. For the zoning bylaw committee and the zoning board, I'll recognize Tom Callahan.
Thank you. This, this article as well is pretty straightforward. Article 3 deals with our zoning districts and our zoning map. This is just to clean it up, update it, update our, have the correct map references, make sure we have the correct districts. There was a district in there that was listed that's not really a district, and it's just to clean this up, so it's really housekeeping changes that were necessary.
Thank you. The select board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Advisory committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. And the planning board has recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote, motion under Article 22, does require two-thirds vote for adoption, again, we're moving it with the typo corrected as I read. All those in favor of the motion under Article 22, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion has passed unanimously. Article 23, zoning bylaw, amend Article 6, sign regulations. This one, we have a couple typos. On page 23 of your warrant, on the middle of the page, paragraph B reads, "no signs, comma, other than posting signs or temporary signs allowed under section 300-6.4. B, may," and then the word "not" should be deleted. So it should read, "may be pasted on or attached." So we're deleting the word "not" at the end of that line. The other typo in paragraph F, near the bottom of the page, gives a time period, limited to the hours between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. Those two were reversed in the printed version of your warrant, and apparently they should read, "limited to the hours between 6:00 AM and 10:00 PM." So the time period is now 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM, not the other way around. May I have a motion, and by the way, I'm not coming up with these typos, our council is, and in one case, an alert citizen is. So we're correcting them so that we don't, by mistake, pass something with a typo in it. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting with the changes of the correction of those typos? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, does require two-thirds vote for adoption. For the zoning bylaw committee and zoning board, I'll recognize Tom Callahan.
Thank you. Article 6 of the zoning bylaw is our sign regulations, it's very long and extensive. Most of the changes here is a reorganization and cleaning up, but of the substantive changes in it, we are clarifying our definition of political and non-commercial signs, to make sure that they are provided the protection granted by the First Amendment. We are also making clear the exemption of town signs and Commonwealth signs and federal government signs from our regulations, just to make it more clear than it was in our current bylaw. And the third substantive change is to provide a height limit for freestanding signs. Our current bylaw, however it happened, does not have a height limit, so theoretically you could have one of those signs you see out in an interstate, that could be a couple hundred feet in the air. But we have put in a reasonable height limit of 10 feet in the residential districts and 20 feet in the commercial districts.
Thank you. The select board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Advisory committee recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero. Planning board recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. Mr. Sajak?
Hi, Wayne Sajak, 432 Beechwood Street. On page 23F, and I'll read it, "strings of lights or other similar devices are prohibited in the business and industrial districts, except during the period commencing on Thanksgiving Day and ending on January 15 of the ensuing year." I have a problem with this, because every restaurant in Cohasset, I don't think, including The Red Lion Inn, Via Bistro, Split Rock, Salt House, use strings of lights during the rest of the year, especially during the summer, as a, as a, as something that they all do. If this passed, those would be prohibited, and to me, that, it's crazy. So I think that, that either you could do, if you, if you're able to, change that so that they can be used during other times, or I don't know else how, what to do. These, excuse me, the second one is, "no sign may be located closer to than 15 feet from any property line." Well, that means the Cohasset Village would not be allowed to have a sign within 15 feet of... of, you know, in other words, the town line is on the sidewalk, you're going to prohibit signs because they're not 15 feet away. I don't, you know, if you can clear that up. This is page 25, and it's right up to number B, the following location and height restrictions apply to signs in the business and industrial districts, and it says, "No sign may be located within 15 feet from the property line." That's right next to, the next one is, you can have it 20 feet in height. So I guess what I want to know is, are you outlawing restaurants to having strings of light, or what are you doing?
Well, I just quickly looked up our existing bylaw, and our existing bylaw prohibits it, it's the same language. It must be a question of enforcement, I guess, but it's prohibited in our current bylaw, we just carried that language over.
Well, if we're doing a remake of the bylaw, we should make it so that it's more understandable. Because I thought--
I think prohibited is fairly understandable to people, it's a question of whether you want the prohibition or not. It is obviously being done in violation of our current bylaw, and we're just simply extending the language of the current bylaw. And I suppose, depending on where these lights might be, you might find them offensive to have lights next door to you at any period of time, but if the sentiment of the room is to amend that and take that out, I'm not going to sit here and argue to the death about it, but it is from our existing bylaw, it has been there for--
Well, but one of the things you're doing is to look at the existing bylaw and seeing where there might be errors, and this is an error.
Well, I'm not sure, well, I'm not sure anybody considered it to be an error.
So I think we get the point, do we need any more discussion on this point?
So what do I, how do I get it so that that can be changed?
Well, you can either recommend that people vote against it, or you can propose an amendment.
Okay, I recommend that people should be against this, that they'd like to have lights where they're dining, or even at, you know, anything like that.
Thank you. Ms. McMorris.
Ronnie McMorris, 89 Dillon Street. I move that we amend this section to remove, strike, section F. I totally agree with Wayne, that it makes no sense.
So help us, we're, this is on page 23, the first--
F, string of lights.
Okay, so a motion has been made that we amend the motion under consideration by removing the language that currently appears on page 23 of your warrant, that begins F, strings of lights or other similar devices, so that would just be removed if this amendment is adopted. So is there a second for the amendment? Thank you, the motion has been made and seconded, we'll now discuss the amendment, we'll then vote on the amendment, which will either remove or not remove that language from the main motion, and then we will go back to discussing the main motion. So we're going to have, just to keep things straight so people's heads don't come off, I'm going to limit the discussion now to that proposed change about strings of lights. Do we have any discussion about the proposed amendment having to do with strings of lights? Mr. Carlson, and then the woman.
Paul Carlson, 82 Wheelwright Farm. I'm fundamentally opposed to having bylaws that aren't enforced, and that can lead to selective enforcement or whatever. If it's not going to be enforced, let's take it out of there, I support this amendment.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Amy Glassmeyer, and I'm the vice chair of the planning board. This feels to me like it could either be a mistake, or that it needs to be further considered on the part of the zoning bylaw working group, and that to adjust it in any way, rather than table it, to have it be referred back to the zoning bylaw working group, could be a mistake. So if it's unnecessary as an item, and an item, and it is an item that could be reconsidered, I think that's a better preference than to act without having had, as a member of the board, I don't feel that I've had an opportunity to consider the topic myself.
Thank you, is there further discussion on the proposed amendment? Mr. Kennedy.
Patrick Kennedy, 59 Jerusalem Road Drive. If this amendment were to pass, then the amendment should also include relettering of the subsequent provisions of this provision. So I would propose that the amendment be to amend section 300-6.2 to strike subsection F, and to reletter subsections G, H, and I to F, G, and H. I would ask Mr. Sajak if that would be an acceptable change to his amendment, and have that replace the original amendment.
Yes, so that clearly is just administrative, so with the consent of the meeting, we will view that as included within the amendment. Is there any further discussion of the amendment? Very well, we'll proceed to a voice vote on the amendment.
May I just make a point that, sitting here just individually, I don't feel strongly about opposing the amendment, but if the amendment is defeated, and if the bylaw was withdrawn, then the existing bylaw remains, and the existing bylaw prohibits string lights at this time, so.
But it should just be made right, instead of going back to a wrong.
Then we'll vote for the amendment.
So we're going to proceed to a vote, voice vote on the amendment. The amendment itself just requires a majority vote, that will just either change or not change the text of the main motion, then we can go back to discussing the main motion. Everybody good on the procedural aspect of that? Good, we'll proceed to a voice vote on the amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The amendment passes. We will now go back to discussing the main motion as so amended. Is there further discussion of the main motion? Sir?
Hi, Tom Mead, 711 Jerusalem Road. Question on the height, was there any consideration of higher max in the 3A corridor? Have you guys talked about that at all? And if not, is that something that possibly could be put in later? How would that work?
You're talking about, the only height issue here is the freestanding sign, and we just looked at these limits, and, you know, it was suggested to put in these limits because we had none, and we were comfortable with putting these limits, and we were comfortable that 20 feet in all the commercial districts, which include 3A, was fine. But I will tell you that as we go to the fall, particularly since we have to deal with some things such as housing choice, and where do we put that zoning, 3A is going to be looked at with a bigger, a closer look than it has been thus far. We have to look about how we're going to be zoning 3A going forward, because we have a number of issues that we have to address in the town that affect 3A. So there's nothing that precludes us from looking at that again, but we're all comfortable with the 20 feet for the commercial districts at this time, as opposed to having no limit.
Thank you.
Tanya Bodil, 88 South Main Street. I have a concern with the description of typo, because the two typos you described completely changed the meaning. It creates confusion in my mind about what was voted on by the different committees. Was it the original text? Was it the text that was in the warrant? Was it something else? And so, per the definition in Webster Dictionary and the Cambridge Dictionary, as you described, those typos which completely change the meaning, they're not typos at all. They are actually significant changes to the text.
I think the point is, the proponents thought that the language that was in the warrant was not what they intended, so they've asked that the meeting consider the language that they've attended. It actually doesn't matter from the procedural aspect here whether it is or isn't a typo. The motion that was made now has the language that the proponents would like. If you'd like to propose an amendment to change it back, you can certainly do that. Is there any other discussion?
Can I just address that for a moment? If the issue is that the substantive typo that we found there was the switch of the times, and what we are switching it back to is what's in the bylaw today, it just got transposed at some step in the process of typing this up. But we're keeping what we have today on what the prohibition is about when you can light an illuminated sign.
Mr. McMorris.
Thank you, David McMorris, 89 Dillon Street. Wayne had another question about the signs in the business district being within 15 feet of a property line, which I thought was a pretty solid question, and haven't heard an answer yet.
Apologize, I'm just taking a quick look about our current bylaw. I don't see anything, just a quick glance at it, it's in our current bylaw or not, to set that front. I don't know if that was-- I'm not trying to--
It's on page 25, it's B1.
Judge Cutler was just pointing out, it is in our existing bylaw today. Again, we have accessory signs in the highway, business, and light industry districts, 15 feet. I don't believe this village district is being-- What page was that on again, sorry, Dave?
It's on 25, it's business and industrial districts.
Yeah, that's not the village district.
Can you explain to us what districts those are?
That would be 3A. Well, there's multiple districts on 3A that would fall under that definition, and the end of Parker Avenue, believe it or not, is currently zoned light industry, so it would be on Parker Ave and on 3A. The village district has its own distinct, it's a distinctly defined district, and it also has a distinct section in the bylaw.
Our districts in the definitions that we already dealt with on page 20, has waterfront business, downtown business, village business, highway business, technology business. That's all business, there's no just business district.
Business and light industry, we're referring to 3A, but--
Well, you have the definitions of the districts here--
I understand that, and I understand what you're saying, Dave, again, we weren't rewriting this bylaw from top to bottom, we were housekeeping it, and this is provisions that are in our current bylaw that we felt were necessary to carry over.
Okay, I think that this is an issue. And I agree that, I don't want to nitpick this stuff, and I think you guys did a great job going through all this, I've been through it once in the zoning board meeting with you folks, I think you've done a terrific job.
I appreciate that, and we know that going through this process, and I can assure everybody else here, we went through multiple boards, including Dave's zoning board. We do know that it is unfair to everyone to deal with that at the very last minute before town meeting, and as we go forward with the next round of changes to the bylaw, we do intend to change that process, and reach out to the select board, the planning board, and the zoning board a lot earlier than we did in this iteration.
I think you should make a note to take another look at this one.
Again, there's no reason it can't be amended further in the fall.
Thank you. Is there further discussion about the amended motion under Article 23? We'll proceed to a voice vote, it does require two-thirds vote for adoption, again, the main motion has been amended, that amendment passed. All those in favor of the amended motion under Article 23, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion passed by the requisite two-thirds vote. Article 24, zoning bylaw, amend Article 8, non-conforming uses, structure, and lots, amendments to Article 8. Again, there's one correction that the proponents would like to make on page 29 of your printed warrant. Text at the very bottom, last line on the page, page 29, there's a section reference there, text reads currently in your warrant, at the end of the sentence in section 300-8.6. C, should have, we're told, added at the after the capital letter C, parentheses, 1, close parentheses, so that would read, end of the sentence in section 300-8.6. C, paren, 1, close paren, period. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting with that one minor change? Thank you, may I have a second? Thank you, motion has been made and seconded, requires two-thirds vote for adoption. Recognize again, the zoning bylaw committee, the zoning board, Tom Callahan.
Thank you. Article 8 is the article of the bylaw that deals with non-conforming uses, structures, and lots. This is, this article, permits under this article are usually the exclusive purview of the planning board, I mean, the zoning board of appeals, excuse me. This is being presented to you in two parts. The first part is the housekeeping and reorganization of our existing Article 8, and the second part of it is to deal with Cohasset's unique exception to something that is called the single lot exemption. And Cohasset's unique exception has basically made the application of that exception open-ended, whereas under state law, it had a cutoff point. When our bylaw was originally written in 1955, it had a cutoff point, that was changed in '78, for whatever reason. We are putting in a cutoff point, meaning that in order for someone to take advantage of the exception, which has to deal with common ownership and grandfather, and when there's a zoning change, the lot has to be in existence before June 30, 2023. Right now, we don't have any restriction on the time limit, and it's open-ended. We've had court cases that the town has lost, where the town has said, basically, you have taken away this doctrine under state law, and you've done something completely different. And what it's led to is that lots that would not be able to be developed under state law get developed under Cohasset law. So the second part of that is to change that, and basically go back to a principle we first adopted in 1955. So I'll take questions on that, it's, the single lot exemption is difficult to understand and explain sometimes, but we are trying to, essentially with the change, it's your second vote tonight, is take away Cohasset being a true outlier, but I want to emphasize on that vote, that anybody today that has rights under our current unique exception will continue to have those rights. This amendment cannot take those away. We can't tell you how many properties are impacted by this, because it requires a title search of each property, we had estimated anywhere from 76 to maybe 176 at one point. But anyone who would have rights under Cohasset's unique version of the single lot exemption today will continue to have those rights going forward. What the second part of this vote is doing is to cut off the creation of new rights in the future, in the same manner that state law does, and in the same manner that Cohasset's bylaw is originally written had done. Thank you.
Thank you. The select board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero, advisory committee has recommended approval by a vote of eight to zero, the planning board has recommended approval by a vote of six to zero. We've had one more correction, this is a true typo, call to my attention, I guess, let me read it to you, and with the consent of the meeting, we'll treat the amendment, sorry, the motion that was made as incorporating this change. Page 28, five, six lines from the bottom, there's a word that is currently spelt B-U-L-T, maybe bolt. That is intended to be B-U-I-L-T, built, so then it would read maybe built, so with the consensus of the meeting, we'll treat that typo as being corrected. Is there any further discussion? Motion under Article 24 does require two-thirds vote. As I mentioned, there was that one minor correction that I just gave you, and then there was the addition earlier of the section reference, adding the parentheses, 1, close parentheses. May, so the motion we're voting on has those two changes made to it. May-- May...
The first vote is just on housekeeping changes to the existing article, the second vote is on changing the passage to...
Let me, the motion is a single motion under this article.
Is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a single motion, passes everything that's under Article 24.
All right. Thank you.
Does require two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 24, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously. Article 25, zoning bylaw, amend Article 12, administration and enforcement. May I have a motion in the form distributed to the meeting?
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a second? Thank you. The motion has been made and seconded. Again, it requires two-thirds vote for adoption, and again, Tom Callahan.
Thank you. Article 12 of our zoning bylaw is this article, it's called administration and enforcement. It sets out the authority of the building inspector, and it sets out the various permitting processes that one has to undertake between either the zoning board or the planning board. Again, consistent with the other articles, a lot of this is housekeeping, reorganizing, taking out redundant language, specifically with the building inspector's authority is clarifying his role. The substantive change is that the violations of the zoning bylaw are currently $100 per day. We are proposing increasing that to 300, which is the state maximum, and is consistent with our conservation bylaw and other bylaws in the town that have a $300 a day maximum. Unlike some of the other boards, I just wanted to point out that the only person who can issue a fine is the building inspector. The planning board and the zoning board do not have the independent authority to impose a fine, unlike our conservation commission or our board of health. The other substantive change is to update and revise the language regarding site plan review. Site plan review is a particular process that's brought before the planning board, usually involving only commercial properties, to make sure certain issues about traffic, our traffic and flow with property and everything is dealt with sufficiently. The changes that are being suggested were suggested to us by our council to bring us more up-to-date and in line with state decisional law that has occurred since the last time this bylaw was amended. So, but that's the substantive.
Thank you. The select board has recommended approval by a vote of five to zero. Advisory committee recommends approval by a vote of eight to zero, and the planning board recommends approval by a vote of six to zero. Is there discussion? We'll proceed to a voice vote. Again, motion requires two-thirds vote for adoption. All those in favor of the motion under Article 25, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. The motion is adopted unanimously.
Thank you, everyone.
That concludes the business in the warrant. Thank you all very much for your stamina and your patience and your goodwill. May I have a motion to dissolve?
Aye.
Thank you. May I have a second? All those in favor of the motion to dissolve, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please signify by saying nay. Motion passes unanimously. The meeting is dissolved. Again, thank you very much, very much appreciated by your moderator. Have a good evening.